The session is called to order. Please rise for the indication. Silent, one-minute silent prayer. Please remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the roll and defer also for the approval of the journal.
Is there any objection? The chair is not, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is not, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read reference of business and resolutions.
Reference of Business. Bills on First Reading. House Bill Number 5583, authorizing the use of the rice subsidy as provided for under the Pantawid Pamilya Pilipino Program in the General Appropriations Act of 2019 for the purchase of palay from farmers mandating for the purpose the DSWD in coordination with the DA and NFA to buy palay from local farmers and distribute rice subsidy in the form of actual rice instead of cash assistance to qualified beneficiaries. Representative Villia Fuerte.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food and Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill Number 5584, expanding further the jurisdiction of the Metropolitan Trial Courts, Municipal Trial Courts in Cities, Municipal Trial Courts and Municipal Circuit Trial Courts. Representative Deatchon.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5585, creating a Kakao Research and Development Center. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Number 5586, providing for a five-day special emergency leave for all workers in public and private sectors directly affected by natural calamities or disasters. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and Committee on Labor Employment.
House Bill Number 5587, amending Presidential Decree Number 1146. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill Number 5588, amending RA Number 8282. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill Number 5589, advancing the rights of street children by strengthening the barangay council for the protection of children and establishing establishing an incentive system for the private sector engaged in the promotion of the welfare of street children. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Number 5590, providing for the protection of workers in businesses, business processes outsourcing industry. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Labor Employment.
House Bill Number 5591, penalizing the imposition of a no-permit, no-exam policy or any such policy that prohibits students of post-secondary and higher education from taking their midterm or final examination or other similar assessments due to unpaid tuition and other school fees. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5592, protecting unattended children in unattended children in motor vehicles. Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Welfare and Children.
House Bill Number 5593, prohibiting telecommunications company from imposing an expiration period on the validity of prepaid call and text cards and the forfeiture of load credits thereof. Representative Nieto, Maceda, Malapitan, Martinez and Valeriano.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill Number 5594, granting civil service eligibility to those who have rendered at least three consecutive years of government service or at least five non-consecutive years whose appointment status is either contractual, cashual or job order. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number 5595, providing for the construction of a multipurpose gym in all municipalities and cities to serve as evacuation centers during times of calamity or disaster. Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Disaster Management.
House Bill Number 5596, regulating the work schedule and other terms of engagement governing cinema, radio, television, theater and other media personnel who are covered by a service or talent contract. Representative Nieto, Maceda, Malapitan, Martinez and Valeriano.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Number 5597, strengthening the architecture profession. Representative Nieto, Maceda, Malapitan, Martinez and Valeriano.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number 5598, establishing Masagana Ganap at Maydangal na buhay na haya-hay program, granting incentives to legitimate spouses having one to two children. Representative Plaza.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill Number 5599, creating a barangay to be known as barangay Den Gao in Tinong Ifugao. Representative Chingalao.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5600, declaring June 29 of every year as a special non-working holiday in Polangi Albay in commemoration of its founding anniversary. Representative Cabrero.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5601, earmarking 20% of the DNR budget for enhanced national greening program to be used to fund the establishment of commercial bamboo plantations. Representative Sabiliano.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Number 5602, requiring the mandatory compliance by all motorcycle riders and operators to automatically turn on their headlights at all hours of the day and night on all roads. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 5603, promoting the rights of nature in the Philippines. Representative Belmonte.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill Number 5604, amending Sections 11 and 14 of RA Number 3019. Representative Abu.
To the Committee on Revisions of Law.
House Bill Number 5605, regulating planning, design, construction, occupancy and maintenance of buildings, promoting building resilience versus earthquake, fire, flood, storm and multiple hazards and acting a new Philippine Building Act. Representative Momo.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 5606, requiring the registration of all users of prepaid subscriber identity modules, cards of mobile phones. Representative Lasatin.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill Number 5607, rationalizing government interventions in labor disputes by adopting the essential services criteria in the exercise of the assumption or certification power of the Secretary of Labor and Employment and decriminalizing violations thereof. Representative Negrales Jerico.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Number 5608, renewing the franchise granted to ABS-CBN Corporation under RA Number 7966.
Representative Gonzalez, Aurelio, Pimentel and Deatchon.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill Number 5609, strengthening RA Number 9208 as amended by RA Number 10364. Representative Alonte.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Number 5610, institutionalizing microfinance programs to access capital to support the grow of MSMEs. Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Micro, Small, Medium Enterprises Development.
House Bill Number 5611, allowing the procurement of additional health insurance from reputable private health maintenance organization for uniformed personnel. Representative Reyes and Lopez.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5612, amending RA Number 10173. Representative Yap Victor.
To the Committee on Information, Communications Technology.
Resolutions. House Resolution 547, congratulating and commending archery gold medalist Adriana Robes. Representative Borzaga.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 548, directing the House Committee on Metro Manila Development to immediately conduct an inquiry with respect to the proposal to develop the Wawa Dam in Rodriguez Rizal. Representative Fernando.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution Number 549, utilizing idle lands in military reservations and in SUCs on stressed lands and on watersheds and land areas within Laguna Lake Development Authority's jurisdiction for the establishment of commercial bamboo plantations using commercial bamboo species. Representative Sabiliano.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Resolution 550, commending Ms. Kristeta Pasia commemored for receiving an honorary degree from the University of the Philippines in recognition for her exemplary achievements. Representative Sabiliano.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 553, urging the House to prohibit or regulate the use of plastic water bottles in the House of Representative South Lounge in order to help the environment and conserve water. Representative Matugas.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Resolution 554, recognizing and honoring Dr. Hoven R. Kaunak as a natural neurologist, art patron and humanitarian on the occasion of his 80th birthday on December 31, 2019 and his 60th year as a doctor and for his exemplary contribution and accomplishments that enrich Philippine medicine, arts, culture and the society in general, which brought honor and pride to the Filipino people. Representative Sinson Mihan.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message from the Senate. Message dated November 25, 2019, informing the House that the Senate passed SB Number 1076 on November 11, 2019. And the House likewise passed HB Number 5477 on November 18, 2019.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated November 26, 2019, informing the House that the Senate on even date passed with amendments. House Bill Number 5437.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Communications. Letter dated October 23, 2019 of Mary Marilyn Numbino, Mayor, Anganan Pangasinan, transmitting the report on fund utilization and the status of projects. Implementation Annex 1 for quarter ended September 30, 2019 on the Local Government Support Fund fiscal year 2018.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated October 30, 2019 of Minerva Morales, SUC President 3, Cataduwan State University, submitting their quarterly financial reports for the quarters ending June 30, 2019 and September 30, 2019.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated November 5, 2019, Tadeos A. Ramos, Mayor Ragay Camerini Sur, submitting a completion reports fiscal year 2018, construction, rehabilitation, repair and improvement of public market under the Local Government Support Fund, financial assistance to local government units fiscal year 2017.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated November 8, 2019 of Cesar Dulay, Commissioner, BIR, DOF, forwarding budget and financial accountability reports as of September 30, 2019.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated 8 November, 2019, of Secretary Secher, Presidential Advisor on Legislative Affairs and head, PLLO, submitting details on appropriations, obligations and disbursements of the PLLO for the month ending October 31, 2019 pursuant to Section 101 of RA Number 11260.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Agency Action Plan and Status of Implementation for Observations and Recommendations in the Annual Audit Report for Calendar Year 2018 and the latest update of the AAPSI submitted on fiscal year 2017, annual audit report of the PCOO.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated 12 November, 2019 of Janice Ison Zales, Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, BSP, furnishing the House with duly certified, authenticated BSP issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated 20 November, 2019 of Donald Robes, Acting Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, BSP, furnishing the House with duly certified and authenticated DSP issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Report, Report Number 92 to 96, the Committees on Justice and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 5614 to 5618.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 97 and 98 of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture on House Bill Numbers 5643 and 5644.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended.
... Kado ako sa one, three, sa nila. Dunapaw ako. Trusilang luha.
Sabi ko okay, kaya lang matagyo kayo. Haplang hab. Ipo niya.
Makaya ng klase na nawa.
Alam mo ba napakconservative mo?
Pulaw. Mduwa siya. Parek ta't ta'na di ko bigla. Xpito pa ko sa ano.
That's right.
Ubat niya. Ma'kin gulo mo balake. Uro takwa. Mom na pay mo ang pag. Sayo kayo. Aso lagi buhat. Labaw? Amo diyan mahal na. Pay mo amo diyan. Gold day karibu atin mo. Bela bol. What's up?
Session resume. Majority leader.
Madam speaker, I move that we open the question of privilege.
Uh, is there any rejection? The chair here is none. Privilege hour is now open. Majority leader.
Madam speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable Ron Salo to avail of the question of privilege.
Um, honorable Ron Salo is now recognized.
Thank you very much, madam speaker. Madam speaker, my esteemed colleagues, guests, ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant afternoon to all. Today, I rise on a matter of personal privilege, that of my duty to call for the unity and solidarity of our people in support of our athletes competing at the Southeast Asian Games being held here in our country, as well as to their organizers, to enable them deliver the highest quality hospitality and sportsmanship. Madam speaker, on Saturday, November 30 at 7 o'clock in the evening, around 500 million people from all over Southeast Asia and neighboring countries will be closely watching the Philippines as the country hosts the 30th Sea Games. And for the next two weeks, we shall be under closest scrutiny and sharpest scowlpel of every nation in the region. Everyone awaits with eager anticipation whether our country will be able to rise to the challenge of the gargantuan task of hosting such an international event. Madam speaker, sports has been the outlet of man's insatiable desire, thirst for competition. It includes all forms of competitive physical activity or games that provide enjoyment to the participants, as well as entertainment to spectators. In ancient times, the Greeks established a wide range of sports that heavily influenced their society. Sports became such a prominent part of their culture that they created the Olympic Games, which were held every four years in this small Greek village called Olympiad. In order to foster the spirit of competition and unity in our continental region, the first Sea Games was staged in 1959. The Philippines made its debut in the Games in 1977 and has hosted this biennial international motorsport event four times since its inception. It has been 14 years since we last hosted Sea Games and the most recent is set to formally begin on November 30, 2019, the Philippine Arena. Madam speaker, it should be noted that the global sports industry is valued at $620 billion, which includes sports infrastructure construction, sporting goods, licensed products, and sporting events. This highly specialized industry is growing faster than the GDPs of China, India, Brazil, and Russia respectively. And with our successful hosting of the 30th Sea Games, the Philippines is poised to tap into this billion-dollar industry for the benefit of our countrymen. Madam speaker, our hosting the 30th Sea Games puts this pipeline on our Filipino athletes and is a big boost to Philippine grassroots program which is essential for our youth development. It is also a critical aspect of President Duterte's campaign to eradicate the illegal drug menace that has ravaged the youth. In 2005, when we last hosted Sea Games, we won 112 gold, 85 silver, and 93 bronze medals for a grand total of 290 medals on our way to our first-ever Sea Games overall championship. This has shown that our country can compete with the best in our region with a united Filipino people supporting our athletes in their quest to bring pride, honor, and glory to our country. We were capable then, and certainly, we are very much capable now of reclaiming the overall championships. It requires, though, full and unqualified support from all sectors, from the government, the private sectors, the athletes, the media, and the rest of the Filipino people. Madam speaker, for the 30th Sea Games, the Philippines has organized 56 sports and 530 events, the biggest so far in the history of the Sea Games, to be contested by more than 11,000 athletes and team officials. 9,000 volunteers spread out in 58 competition venues and 10 non-competition venues located in the northern, central, and southern parts of Luzon, including Metro Manila in a span of around two weeks. Participating in these years' Games are 11 countries: Brunei, Cambodia, Indonesia, Laos, Malaysia, Myanmar, Singapore, Thailand, Timor-Lester, Vietnam, and the Philippines, representing 657 million people of the world. Hosting such an international games of this magnitude will have inevitable small glitches. This include incidents like what our athletes had to go through in other countries, where they even had to push their own bass to get to your competition venue. That was the experience of our Filipino athletes last Sea Games in Thailand. With this colossal challenge in hosting, I would commend the organizers that despite the budget delay and even with slashing the Sea Games budget by Senator Delon amounting to 2.5 billion pesos, we stand ready in showcasing to the world our people, our culture, and our talents. Curiously however, simultaneous with the 2.5 billion slashed in the Sea Games budget is the increase in the budget for various infrastructure projects in Ilo by 2.3 billion pesos. But all of that is water under the bridge, madam speaker. What we need to do now is to ensure the success of this event. We have successfully done it in the past with the support of our people, and certainly, we can do it again with the same level of support if not more from our people. Madam speaker, we are cognizant of various issues and controversies that have cropped up in recent weeks concerning our capability and competence to host this grand event. Critics have hurled too many accusations and unkind words against the Sea Games organizers. If only this international sporting event is a matter of number of accusations, the critics would have already hold a record number of gold medals. Unfortunately, it is not however. Instead, it is a matter of gold medals hold by our athletes. It is a matter of excellent hosting. It is a matter of world-class hospitality. It is a matter of pride and glory we bring to our country. Madam speaker, this representation is deeply bothered how the national media is treating every single alleged shortcomings in our hosting of the Sea Games as if these are more important than the game itself. They appear to be having a feast in featuring all alleged mistakes, but neglecting to report the good experiences of majority of the delegates. As such, I have this personal impression that there appears to be concerted, deliberate, organized, and seemingly malicious disinformation campaign in the media, both traditional and in social media, aiming at discrediting the organizers, the Games, and the Philippines. In fact, I found a pattern of fake news emerging. While we want to give the critiques the benefit of the doubt, the following images show a clear pattern of disregard not only of the truth, but also of the greater interest of the nation. First is the alleged kikiam, which has already went viral. When in fact, it was a chicken sausage. Yes, it may look like a kikiam, but the truth is, it was a chicken sausage. Second is the alleged Binian football stadium, when in fact, it was a different picture altogether that was shown to us. Third is the alleged makeshift press con, when the real official media sent when the real official media center is the World Trade Center. Fourth is the alleged aquatic center, when what is shown is a picture of Nepal's sports facility. Fifth is the alleged blunder in the use of Philippine flag at the 2019 Sea Games, when what is shown is actually a different event altogether. Six are the alleged difficulties encountered by Cambodia's football team blamed at the organizers, when the official statement of Century Park Hotel Manila states that a concern arose because of the team's changes in their own schedule. To make matters worse, there's an apparent desire to paint the entire hosting as a failure simply because of two incidents of transportation mishaps. And one of those two was that even the result of the organizers' shortcoming, when there were 112 arrivals, 110 of which had no negative incident at all. As a result, this fake news, the Philippines is painted as a complete failure in its hosting, with foreign media calling it "model in Manila." Madam Speaker, we have already heard accusations. We have already heard grievances. We have already heard the concerns. Thus, for these critics to continually blow up your concerns out of proportion is not only condemnable, but may already be considered an act of treason. Isn't it time now for us to get back to work and allow the organizers to address these concerns? Isn't it time now for our athletes to have their undivided time attention to the most important objective at hand? To compete to your highest level and bring more gold medals to our motherland? Isn't it time now for the Filipino people to throw your full and unqualified support to our athletes and organizers? Madam Speaker, this is not to say that the concerns raised by some critics are not legitimate. Neither to say that airing officials should not be made accountable and ultimately made liable when pieces of evidence would point to your infractions. Neither are we saying that we should turn a blind eye or just to sweep under the rug serious allegations of corruption. However, at this point, we need to exercise extreme caution, restraint, and discernment, lest we miss the entire objective and rare opportunity of hosting the Sea Games, that of showing to the world the quality of our athletes, our capability as a nation and as a people to host this international event and to showcase a world-class hospitality to our guests from participating countries. Let us all fix our eyes to the real and bigger picture and the bigger prize, that of bringing glory and honor to our country and to our people. And let us not be deceived and misled by malicious intentions of some critics who only bask in the glory of pointing alleged inadequacies or shortcomings of the organizers and of this government. Madam Speaker, the Book of Ecclesiastes, Chapter 3, Verses 1 to 8 of the Holy Scriptures, reminds us that there is a time for everything. It reads: "There is a time for everything and a season for every activity under the heavens; a time to be born and a time to die; a time to plant and a time to uproot; a time to kill and a time to heal; a time to tear down and a time to build; a time to weep and a time to laugh; a time to mourn and a time to dance; a time to scatter stones and a time to gather them; a time to embrace and a time to refrain from embracing; a time to search and a time to give up; a time to keep and a time to throw away; a time to tear and a time to mend; a time to be silent and a time to speak; a time to love and a time to hate; a time for war and a time for peace." Madam Speaker, in the coming days, we will see our athletes compete for our country. We will see them with the white-hot flames that represent Filipino pride and the fighting spirit that brings hope, honor, and glory to our nation. Now then, is the time to be united for our athletes and the organizers in order for us to show not only to Southeast Asia, but to the rest of the world who we are as a nation. For some of these athletes, these Games are an avenue for them to develop as a person. For some, these Games are your ticket to get a good education, your ticket out of poverty, your chance for a better future. And for the rest of us, it is our time to shine as a nation. Madam Speaker, beyond party lines, beyond political colors, and beyond personal convictions, let us all be united in one cause and in one goal. Let us give our athletes and the organizers the genuine support that they need at this great event. As Filipino people, we win as one. God bless the organizers. God bless our athletes. God bless the Philippines. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madre de Lider.
Madam Speaker, to interplay our our speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Mike Defensor of the Partilis Anak Tulusugan. So move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Mike Defensor is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, will the Honorable Salo, the privileged speaker, yield to some questions?
Willingly, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Una po salat binabaitiko ang ating kasamaan si Congressman Salo sa kanya pong talumpating ay hapon. It is indeed very timely, considering that there are so many reports and news coming out that seem to divide our country and not to unite for us hosting the Sea Games and of course for our athletes. Alam niyo po naman na, Madam Speaker, na sa panahon na meron tayong mga bisita, importante na tayo nagkakaisa. At lalo tigid, marami po tayong mga atleta na lumalaban, importante na suportahan po natin sila. So I congratulate Honorable Salo for his speech and like to ask him some basic questions for my orientation, Madam Speaker. First of all, Madam Speaker, I'd like to know what is FISGO all about? Or the Philippine Philippine I don't even know the translation of FISGO, Madam Speaker. Maybe I can ask the Honorable Salo for that.
Madam Speaker, the FISGO is the Philippine organizing committee.
And, Madam Speaker, what is the character of the FISGO?
FISGO, Madam Speaker, is the policymaker and chief implementer of the Games, but primarily responsible for the planning and actual preparations, organization, management, and execution of the hosting of the 30th Sea Games.
Ngayon, Madam Speaker, ito po bang FISGO ay ngayon lamang nangyari? O dati na po tayo meron talagang ganitong foundation?
Madam Speaker, nagkaroon na po tayo ng mga ganitong ah, organisasyon or komite na binuo sa mga nakaraan po ng mga Sea Games kung saan tayo po naghost.
Okay, and this is so, Madam Speaker, if I may also contribute to the discussion, so that there will be a corporate judicial personality. Is that correct, Madam Speaker?
Yes, basically, this particular committee was organized and incorporated under the SEC in order for it to have judicial personality inasmuch as it needs to undertake certain acts.
And is it correct, Madam Speaker, that the Philippine Sports Commission and the Philippine Olympic Committee are the two main government agencies, which are also part of the FISGO?
Yes, Madam Speaker. The POC takes the lead of running the technical aspects of all sporting events of the Games. The PSC, POC, and NSA take the lead in training our athletes in preparing them for the Games.
Ngayon po, dito po sa FISGO, sino po ang, ano po ang komposisyon yan? Mas marami po ba ang mga private individuals? O marami po ba dyan ang kawani ng gobyerno as part of the Philippine Sports Commission and the Philippine Olympic Committee?
Magkasama po ito, Madam Speaker. Basically, grupo po ito pareho ng in the government as well as in the private.
Ilan percent po ang gobyerno? How many percent are members of the or employees of the government as part of the FISGO? Madam Speaker, if I may answer that, it's 80%. 80%
Thank you very much.
of the membership of the foundation are actually from the Philippine Sports Commission and the Philippine Olympic Committee. Pangalan to mo nong, Madam Speaker, 'yung punto po na ibinigay natin for the Sea Games, 'yan po ba ay hawak ng FISGO? O sino po bang ahensya ang may hawak niyan?
Madam Speaker, ang pakakalam ko po, hindi po tinanggap ng FISGO po 'yan. Ipinya, under initially, nasa
Madam Speaker, for the training of the athletes, the fans are with the Philippine Olympic Committee. For the bidding of procurement of supplies, including the required infrastructure, it may be with the Philippine Sports Commission and the BCDA, because we have it in the Clark City. Is that correct, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Madam Speaker, but at the same time, they contracted out with the DBM Procurement Service, as I understand, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so I clarify this, Madam Speaker. Pinaklaro ko po to, kasi baka akalain nila ang FISGO ay isang private entity na ngayon lamang nangyari. Sa lahat po ng Southeast Asian Games, para ating nagbubuo ng isang corporate entity, may it be in Singapore, may it be in Malaysia, and now in the Philippines, it is under FISGO. Including, Madam Speaker, is it not correct that the supposed chairman of FISGO was Senator Miguel Subiri? The supposed chairman? Is that correct, Madam Speaker?
That's what I read, Madam Speaker.
Yes, so Madam Speaker, it was only because our speaker, who was then Secretary of Foreign Affairs, who made a bid for the Sea Games and eventually became speaker, kaya po siya ang laging head ng FISGO. Now, I will now go to the points raised by the Honorable Salo. I understand na 'yung punto po ni Honorable Salo, dapat nagkakaroon tayo ng pagkakaisa. Dapat hindi nagkakaturuan. But from what you mentioned, Madam Speaker, mukhang sinasabi niyo ho na merong politikang malalim etong paninira sa Southeast Asian Games hosting ng Pilipinas.
Yan po, Madam Speaker, ang personal kong impresyon. Pagkat makikita po natin, base dun sa akin hinilahad kanina, there appears to be a concerted organization. There's a pattern of all this misinformation or disinformation to the public.
Madam Speaker, if I may request the privileged speaker, kanina po pinakita niyo 'yung picture nun chicken sausage. Maaari po bang makita ulit dun sa ating ah, video board 'yung kaninang inyong part of your privileged speech, 'yung pictures na inyong pinakita? Para lang po ma-isa-isa natin 'yung punto, puntos na rerease ninyo? Madam Speaker, yan.
'yung binabanggit po, Madam Speaker, na sinasabi po nilang Kikiam, when in fact, it was actually chicken sausage.
Actually, Madam Speaker, eto pong picture na to, nagviral to. Ang sinasabi nila, Kikiam daho, ang pinakain sa mga atleta. Tama po ba?
Tama po, pero isa lang kung lugar po 'yan, sa tutuulan po. Sa dami po ng mga sporting facilities, kung saan nakalad po 'yung mga malalaro po natin at malalaro ng ibang bansa, isang lugar lang po 'yan. But at the same time, mali pa po, sapagkat binabanggit nga po nila, Madam Speaker, ang allegation ay Kikiam ang pinakain po sa mga atleta, when in fact, it was chicken sausage. Maring mukha po siyang Kikiam siguro para sa mga hindi po nakakalam exactly kung ano po 'yung itsura o lasa nun Kikiam. Pero, ang katotohanan, chicken po.
Magpasalamat nalik tayo, Madam Speaker, na ang nagviral lang at sinabi ay Kikiam. Dahil kanina si Congressman Marco Leta iba ang binulong sa akin. Hindi lang daw mukhang Kikiam 'yan. Pero okay na rin po. Pangalawa ho, 'yung pinakita ninyo, Binyan Football Stadium. I think you have the
Yes.
also the slider? Yan. So this was also published in social media saying that the one on the left is the Banyan Football Stadium, when in fact, what we have here is the one on the right, the actual Binyan Stadium.
Tama po kayo.
Okay, I will not go into all the pictures that you have shown, but my question is, are you saying therefore that there are some quarters who would like to undermine our country, the hosting of the Philippine government of the Southeast Asian Games?
Gaya po ng nasabi ko po kanina, ganun po ang mga ating impresyon po ng representang timpong ito.
Eh hindi po ba sa sitwasyon natin sa ngayon, pagkatayo na sa gera at ikaw ay kumunta sa gera? Eh tayo namang po naghost, hindi lamang po na sa gera ang ating mga atleta, pero tayo po ay naghost ng maraming bansa. Etto po bang paninirang to? Ano bang criminal liability nito? Is this not tantamount to libel or treason?
Sa batas po, sigurado po may liability po sila, may criminal liability po, 'yung pagpapa purvey o pagpapakala't ng maling impormasyon.
So you, are you calling therefore? Now, I will again, Madam Speaker, follow the lead of the honorable privileged speaker, that this is the time for unity. But at a proper time after the Southeast Asian Games, would you want to investigate this and file the necessary charges against those who are purveying fake news? Not only against the organizers, but more importantly and more significantly against our country?
Certainly, ah, of course, as you mentioned, and as part of the chairman of the Committee on Public Information and which you are also the vice chair, I will definitely be happy to investigate this particular fake news being propagated either in the social media or the national media, traditional media.
Madam Speaker, I would like to go to the points about the teams that were ah, that we had problems in transportation. Ang binanggit niyo po, 112 ang teams na dumating dito sa ating bansa. Or at least 112 contingents arrive in our country. Is that correct, Madam Speaker?
Tama po kayo.
And of the 112, ang nagreklamo po ilan?
Dalawa po. Dalawa po 'yung nagreklamo, pero lumalabas pa po 'yung isa na hindi ah, balik sila po 'yung may dahilan kung bakit nagkamali.
May we know, Madam Speaker, ano po 'yung naging rason bakit nagkaproblema 'yung sinasabi niyong isang team at sila ang may kasalanan? Let me refresh my mind. Madam Speaker, this was the Cambodian team who earlier arrived before even they were supposed to be billeted in the hotel.
Yes, tama po kayo. Salamat sa pagpapalala po sa akin. So basically, 'yung Cambodian team po na yon, ah, nagkaroon po sila ng napaga po 'yung pagdating po nila, basically almost a day before. So, ininform po nila 'yung hotel that they're arriving, pero nasabi po sa kila that ahead of time, na fully booked. But nonetheless, ginawa po lahat nun hotel na magagawa, inasikaso po sila, But nandales, ginawa po lahat ng hotel na magagawa, inasikaso po sila, binigyan po sila ng mayos na pag-iistihan habang nag-aantay po sila ng available na mga kwarto. And early on, as long as, early as in the morning, as supposed to be alas dos pa ng hapon, 'yung pwede pa po silang pumasok, pero as long, as soon as nagkaruna po ng available na kwarto, pinayagan na po sila 'yung iba po doon na makapagbilit dun sa hotel.
Madam speaker, kung titignan po natin 'yung binanggit ng ating kasamahan, the Honorable Ron Salo, out of 112 arrivals, only two had a problem. Kung ito po 'yan, ihalin tulad natin sa isang pagdidiwang, sa isang party, 'yung mga maliliit na pagkakamali, pero sa kabuan maganda. Para anangyari po dito, ang pinapalaki at ang pinapakita 'yung kasamaan. Because at the ratio of 112 to 2, that is not even 1% of the total supposed transportation requirement or logistical support that would have been given by the Philippine government, in this case, the host nation.
But at the same time, mabanggit din po natin, kagaya ng nabanggit niyo po kanina, isa lang po, actually, 'yung isa po doon, talagang sila rin po 'yung inadmit po nila, sila po 'yung nagkamali. 'Yung pangalawa naman, na sinasabi na mali 'yung pinagdalan po sa kanila na hotel, kaya tumagal. So basically, 'yun lang po naman 'yung gravity po nun nangyari, nagleach. Nandales, ang issue po dito, it was blown out of proportion.
Madam speaker, alam niyo po, lumalabas ngayon sa social media ang maraming atleta. Kanina pinakita 'yung mga football players po ba natin 'yun, madam speaker, 'yung mga nagtutulak na sasakyan? They had their own problems. Is that not correct, madam speaker?
Tama po.
Nagsalita po si Anton Kayanan, Badminton, na sila po ni Efren Bata Reyes, nun umatending po sila, nagkaroon sila ng problema dahil hindi sila nasundo. And in fact, eventually, when they were transferred to hotel, nagkamali pa ng hotel. Anton Kayanan is the captain of the Badminton team. And so on...
I clarify po natin, Mr. Speaker, basically, nangyari po 'yan, hindi ngayon, kundi nun nakaraang Sea Games sa Thailand 2017.
Yes, I stand correct, madam speaker. And to clarify the issue, the Filipino athlete was explaining, sinasabi po niya sa kanya Facebook posting, "Eh kami nga na-experience namin 'yan. Birth pains talaga 'yan. Kami pa ni Efren Bata Reyes for billiards in Thailand. Huli kaming sinundo. Nun hinadid kami ng hotel, nagkamali, naghintay ulit kami, kaysa kami inilipad." No less than Chris Yu, currently the director for volunteers, was also explaining some of the problems that they have encountered in the Olympic Games. And no less than our colleagues here, the Honorable Manny Lopez, the Honorable Conrad Estrella, the Honorable Mikey Romero, the president of the Partilis Coalition, have experienced several cases of logistical problems, food problems, in their participation in international Olympic events. Is this not correct, madam speaker?
Tama po kayo, um, Mr. Speaker, madam speaker. And basically, binabanggit nga rin po natin kanina, because 2 or 1 out of 112, it's basically almost nil or isolated 'yung occasion po 'yan, 'yung nangyari na nagkaroon ng bleach.
Madam speaker, eto po mga repair ng mga facilities po natin. Balik lang po pala ako sa budget kanina. Ang sinabi niyo ho, ang in-approved na budget is 7.5 billion. Tama po ba?
7.5 billion po 'yung in-approved po. Ang proposal po na original, base sa ating pagre-research, ah, ang proposal po nila sa DBM was 9.5. Ang inaprobahan po at pinasok po sa NEP was 7.5. And ang inaprobahan din po ng House of Representatives was 7.5. Pero pagdating po sa Senate, na-slash po 'yun at naging 5 billion. So basically, 33.5% ang tinanggal. So, the FISGO, the organizing committee, has to contend with only 67% the total amount.
I will not anymore go to the details of that, madam speaker. I think the Honorable Marco Leta will be the one asking some questions on the budget. But let me just put on record that in 2015, when Singapore hosted the Southeast Asian Games, they spent 12 billion pesos. In the case of Malaysia, they spent 6.3 billion pesos in 2017.
But at the same time, Mr. Speaker, ah, madam speaker, we also have to point out na mas maliit po actually 'yung sporting events noon at mas konti 'yung atleta na nagjoin dun sa dalawang mong binanggit. In our case actually, mas marami po 'yung atleta, mas marami po 'yung mga events na sasalihan.
Can you, madam speaker, clarify ano pong ibig sabihin na mas konti ang events at mas konti ang atleta?
Sa ngayon, almost 11,000 ang nakukumpit sa atin na mga atleta. At the time, mas konti, and at the same time, 500 plus po 'yung sporting events. At the time dun sa binanggit din po ninyo, 400 plus lang po 'yung sporting events po nila. And yet, madam speaker, mas mataas po 'yung ginastos po ng mga bansa ngayon sa pagohost po ng Sea Games.
Madam speaker, I will now go to the, I believe, the main topic that triggered all this. And that is the Caldero. Etopong Caldero ang pinag-usapan. Nun po 2015, when Singapore spent 12 billion pesos, the cost of the cauldron was 62 million pesos. In the case of Malaysia, when they spent 6.3 billion pesos in 2017, the cost of the cauldron was 85 million pesos. Ngayon po, today, we are spending or reallocated 5 billion pesos for the Southeast Asian Games and the cost of the cauldron technically, and I will clarify, is 42 million pesos. 'Yung po 42 million pesos, the actual cauldron is only about 26 million pesos. 26 to 27 million pesos. 7 million for the main cauldron and the platform which costs about 18 to 19 million pesos. So, madam speaker, pero let's assume that the total cost is at 50 million pesos. Madam speaker, ah, I would like to ask the privileged speaker, what is the significance? Ano po ba 'yung significance ng cauldron in any Olympic event, madam speaker?
Malinaw naman po, madam speaker, kung ano po 'yung significance at pinapakita po nun cauldron na'yon. Ah, sa lahat po ng mga sporting event, binabanggit po ninyo of this international character, Olympics, Sea Games, Asian Games, meron pong cauldron na sinisindihan or throughout the duration of that particular sporting event. So, basically, habang ginaganapyo po 'yung lahat po ng event, mayroong apoy na nakasindi dun sa cauldron na'yon.
So, madam speaker, in the opening of the Games, the cauldron would not only be the official, ah, official opening, but it would also serve as the symbol of the nation during, in the flames, to be lighted and will continue to be lighted until the Games are over. Is that correct, madam speaker?
Tama po kayo, madam speaker.
Madam speaker, etopong Caldero na ginawa sa Pilipinas, tama po ba na ito na ang huling piyesa na tinapos ni National Artist Maniosa, madam speaker?
'Yun po 'yung nabasa ko rin po, madam speaker.
And so therefore, madam speaker, is it correct to say na hindi na po 'to basta-basta pwedeng valuhan? Because as I've mentioned, namatay na po ang ating national artist and it is his last piece of work, madam speaker?
Tama po kayo, madam speaker. And at the same time, if you will note, in the Philippines, there are few iconic structures. And I would consider this as an iconic structure. If you would note, madam speaker, the, ah, Eiffel Tower in Paris, actually, when it was launched in 1898 in the Paris Exposition, this was severely criticized by all people, by particular day, by the Parisians. They disliked it so much. But today, until now, years after, it has become the symbol of France. And 'yung binabanggit po nila the time na ginastos all throughout those years, sobrang lakip po 'yung naiambag sa ekonomiya, sa kultura, at sa heritage po ng buong Pransya. In this particular instance, 'yung cauldron na binabanggit po ninyo ay supposed siya's... 'yung presyo po na binanggit niyo 'yun po kanina, masyadong maliit compared to the expenses, expenditures made by other countries. But it really symbolizes our spirit as a Filipino people. It will become and will be an iconic structure for the Philippines.
Madam speaker, in effect, ang sinasabi niyo po, at hindi ko naman ikinisabing equal 'to to that, no? But it's like the Rizal Monument in Lunita, it is like the Bonifacio Monument in Liwasan-Binifacio. Of course, it's not comparable, it's not equal to that, but you're saying that it will become an iconic and historical, ah, figure in our country?
Tama po kayo. Actually, for one, in my case, kapag pupunta rin po tayo ng ibang bansa, ang inahanap po natin actually para magpa-picture kung ano 'yung iconic structure. But unfortunately, sa Pilipinas po talaga, kailangan po natin umaga nito. Sapagkat pagpunta po natin dito, wala masyado. But we really thank the organizers for coming up with this particular emblem, symbol, and soon will really be a historic and iconic structure for us.
Madam speaker, eto pong Caldero ang binabanggit, sabi nila napakamahal, 50 million. Sana lang daw, nagtayo tayo ng classroom. Ang tanong ko, madam speaker, today, Honorable Salo, kung ikaw ba ibibenta sa'yo 'to ng isang daang million, ito ba ibibilin mo itong cauldron na'to pagkatapos ng Sea Games?
Sa kasalukuyan, 'yung aktwal, hindi ko po magkakayanin. Pero assuming meron po akong pera, bakit hindi? 'Yung 50 million is small compared to the value of that particular structure, compared to the symbols that it represents, compared with the history of that particular structure.
Eh kung ibenta sa'yo ng hulugan, madam speaker, ito ba ibibilin mo?
Pwedeng pwede, kahit na mas mataas pa po doon, kahit doble pa, kung may kakayanan po ako, bakit hindi?
Madam speaker, the honorable colleagues in Congress, I wish to ask the honorable privileged speaker, after the Sea Games, the Southeast Asian Games, pag natapos na tubutong lahat, at a proper time, since I think this is a property of the Philippine Sports Commission or the property of the BCDA, na ito po i-open natin for bidding, ibenta natin para matigil na 'yung debate tungkol sa Caldero. Anyway, kung ito po 'yung mabenta ng doble, eh di kumita pa gobyerno. In just a span of 6-7 months, the 50 million has made to 100 million. Will the honorable privileged speaker's support be? In my move to later on, have this bided out after the Southeast Asian Games?
Definitely, kung ito po 'yung mga kaapis po dun sa mga nagkrikritisize dun sa presyo po, na sinasayay po nila na mahal po 'yung Caldero, why not? Kung makakarealis po tayo ng mas malaking halaga para dito. And of course, kung kikita pa 'yung gobyerno. And at the same time, 'yung mga sinasayay po nila na pagpapatayo ng classrooms, kung makapagpapatayo tayo ng mas maraming classrooms out of that particular sale, why not? Disuportahan po natin, kung alam natin na mas malaki 'yung returns po na sa bansa po natin.
Thank you, madam speaker. Madam speaker, I've read several articles coming from Chris Yu, the director for volunteers, Philippine professional basketball player, retired basketball player, Mon Fernandez, Nico Buelgas, a triathlete, Mary Joy Tabal, ah, Olympic, Olympic marathon runner, and Anton Kayanan, all asking us to stop the fighting. No less than Senator Manny Pacquiao this morning, who will also be lighting the cauldron, called for us to stop the bickering and stop the fighting and to unite for our athletes. Sa tingin ko po, at ako po'y susunod sa kanilang panawagan, tigil muna natin 'yung away, madam speaker. Pero, madam speaker, siguro po, sa darating na panahon, pagkatapos ang Sea Games, imbestigahan po natin lahat, tingnan natin saan napunta 'yung pondo, tingnan natin kung ano itong Caldero, tingnan natin saan napunta 'yung na-slash na budget. Pero 'yan po gawin natin pagkatapos. Tama po ba, madam speaker?
Madam speaker, tama po kayo, sapagkat 'yun po 'yung bod po ng ating panawagan ngayon. Ang sinasayay po natin, tigilan muna, magkaroon po tayo ng mas malalim na pagtingin, pagtasa dito sa mga nangyari, sapagkat huwag po tayong ma-wala dun sa main goal po natin. Hindi po natin goal po para dito sa sigil sa ito, eh para ipahiya 'yung bansa po natin. Hindi po natin goal po rito na maghanap ng butas sa kasalukuyan. Ang goal po natin ay magbigay ng karangalan sa bansa po natin.
Thank you, madam speaker. Madam speaker, I have been in the opposition for many years during the 11th Congress. And the principle, madam speaker, that we hold, that we uphold in the opposition is that when the country is at war, when the country is hosting an event, where is internal, when there is internal armed conflict, we rally under the flag. And that, madam speaker, is a principle that we have upheld for, for the years that I have served in the opposition, and I'm sure is still being upheld by those who are part of, or who are critics of this government. And so, I joined the Honorable Salo with this call for unity, for his call to support our athletes, and with his call to unite and support the nation. Again, madam speaker, at a proper time, I call for the investigation of the budget of the Sea Games. I call for the selling of the cauldron that has been a subject of political criticism and the subject that has divided us while we are hosting the Sea Games. But for now, madam speaker, I congratulate and I join the Honorable Salo for making this call. Maraming salamat po at bagad na hapon, senor.
Maraming salamat din po, madam speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, um, next to interpolate our good Congressman Ron Salo is the representative from the first district of Bulacan, Congressman Jonathan Alvarado C.
Honorable Jonathan Alvarado C is now recognized.
Mr. Speaker, can you just, ah, include me in the list to interpolate the honorable gentleman on this subject?
Majority Leader.
His name will be included, Mrs. Speaker, madam speaker.
Okay, um, next in line, kayo, uh, Mr. Honorable Alvarado C.
Maraming salamat po, madam speaker. Congressman Kuya Jonathan C. Alvarado po, NUP, mula sa Lalawigan ng Bulacan. Madam speaker, will the good gentleman from Kabayan Partilis yield to some clarificatory questions from this representation?
Willingly, madam speaker.
Madam speaker, gentleman, you made mention about the slashing of budget amounting to 2.5 billion pesos para sa Sea Games. Para po sa kaintindihan ng ating mga kababayan, maaari ko po ba nga gamitin 'yung aking, ah, 'yung ating pambansang wika, madam speaker? At, ah, sa iyupong privileged speech kanina, meron ka pong nasabi na 'yung budget slash na 2.5 billion ay ginawa ng isang senador? Ano po ang pangalan ng senador na ito, madam speaker, good gentleman?
Sa akin pong pagtasasa't sa aking pagre-research, si Senator Drelon po.
Maraming salamat po, madam speaker. Nun po, ah, madam speaker, good gentleman, nun po nag-propose o inislash ni Senator Drelon ang 2.5 billion budget para sa ating mga atleta at sa pagohost natin ang Sea Games, klaro na po ba o malinaw na ba na ang bansa nas tayo besangain ng ating mga atleta, madam speaker, good gentleman?
Certainly, madam speaker, hindi po, sapagkat nakalat na po 'yun, naka-budget na po 'yun. So kung babawasan mo, paano 'yung mga nakalatag po doon na kailangan pagkagastusan po para sa atleta na po natin at para sa pagohost po ng event na ito?
Madam speaker, 'yung po kayang inislash ni Senator Drelon na 2.5 billion pesos na budget, ito kaya ay nakaapekto sa moral, sa training, sa pagkain at bilis ng pagpapagawa ng mga pasilidad para sa pagohost natin ang Sea Games at para sa ating mga atleta, madam speaker, good gentleman?
Sa tingin ko po 'yan, hindi po tayo magdi-disagree. Inasmuch, as ganun din siguro 'yung pananaw mo po 'yan, mrs. Madam speaker.
Madam speaker, good gentleman, alam niyo po kaya kung saan ng hometown ni Senator Drelon, madam speaker?
Madam speaker, I have no personal knowledge, pero ang nababasa ko po sa Iloilo.
Sa Iloilo po, madam speaker, good gentleman. Alam niyo po, madam speaker, good gentleman, sa amin pong pagsasaliksik, kasabay ng nagkaroon ng budget slash na 2.5 billion pesos para sa ating mga atleta, para sa pagohost natin ang Sea Games, para sa pagkain ng ating mga atleta at ng ating mga pasilidad, bakit naman nagkaroon ng mahigit 2.3 billion pesos na halaga ng budget insertions sa probinsya ng Iloilo, madam speaker, good gentleman? Ito po, madam speaker, good gentleman, ay ilang araw ng paligidligid sa aming kaisipan, sapagkat ang nasabing senador ay kadalasang nagsasalita sa harap ng TV, sa radio, sa social media. Ngunit, bakit napunta? Ngunit, bakit napunta? 'Yung tinanggal na budget sa mga atleta para maging insertion nun taong 2019, nitong taon rin po na ito. Kasabay ng Sea Games, papunta naman sa probinsya ng Iloilo, Madam Speaker, good gentleman?
Madam Speaker, personally, wala po akong personal knowledge tungkol dito, so hindi ko po masasagot. Mas maganda nga po siguro kung 'yung mga alagad po ng media po natin ay matanong din po exactly 'yung proponent po niyan.
Madam Speaker, good gentleman, sa akin pong palagay, ay napakalaking coincidence po ito. Hindi na po siguro matatawag na tadhana. At, uh, kasama ring lumiligin sa aking isip na baka tila sadya na masabutahi ang pagohost ng bansang Pilipinas. Ang host po ng Sea Games ay ang bansang Pilipinas, ang lahat ng Pilipino. Kahit nagaisang, kahit saang lugar ka, kahit anong probinsya ka, kasama ka sa host ng Sea Games. Hindi po host ng Sea Games si Speaker Kayetano. Hindi po host ng Sea Games ang malaking kapulungan ito. Hindi lamang po host ng Sea Games ang senado, lalong, lalong hindi lamang po si Pangulong Duterte o ang kanyang administrasyon ang host ng Sea Games. Ang ipinapahiya po, Madam Speaker, good gentleman, ay tayo, tayong mga Pilipino. Lahat po ng may dugung Pilipino sa atin, sana ay magsama-sama. Tulungan natin 'yung ating mga atleta, iwasan po natin ang pagkakaroon ng crab mentality. Madam Speaker, ang tanging punto ko lamang po, sa panahon ito, kailangan ituloy natin ang pagsoporta sa ating mga atleta. Magkasundup po tayo at magka-isa tayo. Tigilan natin 'yung pangbabas sa bawat isa, sapagkat kung hindi naman constructive criticism, o hindi naman kritisismo na makakatulong sa ating palaro, sa ating bansa, eh bakit ba kailangan siraan natin 'yung ating sarili? Pagka namang pumunta tayo sa ibang bansa, hindi naman itatanong kung kasama ka ba sa nag-host ng Sea Games o hindi. Ang itatanong ay, pag nilapag mo 'yung passport mo, makikita Pilipino ka. Pag pinahiya mo 'yung Pilipinas, pinahiya mo ang sarili mo, pinahiya mo ang kapwa mo, ipinahiya mo ang mga kababayan mo. Madam Speaker, your honor, sa atin pong mga kasama dito sa kongreso, at sa lahat ng ating mga kababayan, ang panahon po ng Sea Games ay panahon ng pagkakaisa. Sana po patuloy ang maging suporta natin sa ating mga atleta, lalong-lalo na sa panahon na sila ay nakalaban. Hindi po ito panahon ng awayan, hindi po ito panahon ng pasikatan o pasaringan. Ito po ay panahon ng pagtutulong-tulong, pagkakaisa para sa ating minimithik na mas maganda at mas ligtas na bansang Pilipinas. Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker. Maraming salamat po sa ating mga, sa ating kasama mula sa Kabayan Partilis.
Maraming salamat din po, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to interpolate our good sponsor is, um, the representative from the PBA Partilis Congressman Jericho Nogales, I move that he be recognized.
Uh, Honorable Jericho Nogales is now recognized.
Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, distinguished sponsor, good afternoon. This is just a short manifestation. The Sea Games is about sports, it is not about politics. I therefore join the call of the honorable gentleman, my colleague, to call for unity behind our athletes, unity under sports. Madam Speaker, distinguished members, sports is about fair play, not politics. Fair competition, respect, friendship, team spirit, equality, sports without doping, respect for written and unwritten rules, such as integrity, solidarity, tolerance, care, excellence, and joy. These are the building blocks of fair play. Politics can learn much from sports. So I support my colleague in his call. That is all, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I completely agree with your manifestation.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the majority moves that we recognize Congressman Eric Pineda from the One Pacman for his interpolation.
Honorable Eric Pineda is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Speaker, ah, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. My distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you to manifest my support for our country and our athletes. In the past few days, we have been seeing several posts, photos online depicting athletes waiting for several hours and finished sports facilities, handwritten schedules, athlete meals that do not appear to be nutritious. People, mostly Filipinos, criticizing our beloved country for being ill-prepared. I am deeply saddened by these images, but more so because those who contribute to the trending status of these posts are our own. The 30th Sea Games has been likened to the Fire Festival, a tragic failure. Even we in government have resorted to finger-pointing. I am ashamed, my dear colleagues, Madam Speaker, that we have all been distracted from what is truly important. This issue should not be made bigger right now. If the budget is insufficient, if the release of it was delayed, and there are anomalies and problems, we can investigate these matters after the events are over. But for now, why don't we all work together and do what we can to help our athletes and to show participating nations are hospitable, how hospitable we Filipinos can be, and that we are good sports? Instead of spreading at Sea Games, let's spread positively. It's time to stop playing the blaming game, and to let everyone do their jobs. We can assume all we want without knowing the truth, but where will that get us? The 30th Sea Games is a group effort, a national effort. Our leaders and athletes need our support right now. That does not be the reason that our athletes lose focus in their game. My distinguished colleagues, I would like to call on each one of you to join me. Let us rally behind our athletes who have given their blood, sweat, and tears, who have trained their whole lives, who are fighting for their dream, who are fighting to bring pride to their home country. Ang Pilipinas kung mahal. Our athletes out there to give their best, why don't we do the same? Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for that manifestation, I completely agree.
Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the majority wishes to move that we recognize Deputy Speaker Rodante Marcoletta of the Saget Partilis for his interpolation.
Deputy Speaker Marcoletta is now recognized.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker. Pwede pa po bang makapagtanong sa inyo, uh, kagalang-galang na kinatawan?
Willingly, Madam Speaker.
Ma- Madam Speaker, ginawang kinatawan. Sa pagdaraus po ng Sea Games sa taong ito, tama po bang sabihing nakasalalay po rito ang karangalan ng ating bansa?
Definitely, Madam Speaker.
Samakatwid, Madam Speaker, your honor, kapagka po ang pinag-uusapan 'yung karangalan at kapakanan ang ating bansa, kasama na rin po ang kanyang mamamayan, kailangan-kailangan siguro po natin ang pagkakaisa, hindi po ba?
Tama po kayo, that's precisely, uh, itong bungad, ubood po ng ating speech po ngayong hapon.
Nang dahil po sa kahalagahan ng aktibidad na 'yan, siguro po, ang karamihan, kung hindi man lahat, kung nakakakita man siya ng pagkukulang sa ilang bahagi ng pag-oorganisa nito, magkukusana po siguro siyang magko-contribute eh. Para lamang, kung ano man 'yung problema na maari nating asahan, ay maiwasan natin at hindi magdulot ng kapinsalaan sa pagdaraus natin ang Sea Games, tama po ba 'yun?
Tama po kayo doon, Madam Speaker.
Nakakalungkot po kasi, Madam Speaker, your honor, kung babasahin po niyo mga pahayagan ngayon, gagaya po nung una 'yung binanggit sa mga, at pinakita sa mga slides, 'yung issue ng kickiam at kung ano-ano pa. Para bang sa pangkalhataan, napabayaan ng ating organizing committee 'yung kapakanan lahat ng mga participants dito. Napakasakit na basahin kapwa Pilipino na parang nagutom 'yung mga ngalalaro na galing pa sa ibang bansa. Ang alayin po niyo, Madam Speaker, your honor, ang gusto pang ilagay na label sa pagdaraus natin ang Sea Games ay hunger games. Bilang isang Pilipino, napakasakit po. Manggagaling sa isang Pilipino, imbes na tumulong siya, siya keep pagtatagumpay, sapagkat nakalala, nakasalalay nga ang karangalan ng bansa natin, para bang nililibak pa ang mga responsable dito para maipagtagumpay natin ang Sea Games. Meron pa pong nabasa kaninang umaga lamang po. Kung ako, alam ko po, nabasa rin po ng ating minority leader. Ang sabi po niya, nabasa rin po niya, at nakita po niya 'yung kickiam eh. Binansagam po niya 'yung Sea Games kalderong walang kanin. Hindi po ba sasakit ang loob niyo, Madam Speaker, your honor, kapagka nabasa po niyo 'yung ganung klasing mga panglilibak?
Kaysa po ako, sa nararamdaman po niyo, Madam Speaker, inasmate, as Pilipino rin po ako, na kung ano man po 'yung kapintasan o kakulangan na sinasabi po nila, ito'y magre-reflect, hindi po sa mga host, uh, sa mga nag-oorganize lang, kundi sa kabuan po sa ating lahat, sa lahat po sa kabuwang Pilipino.
Sa lahat namang po ng gawa, 'yung nang tao, hindi lamang sa ating bansa, siguro po pandagdig na ito. Kahit gaano pa ang resources mo, gaano mang kagaling mag-organisa ka, meron at meron ding problema naman. Nadarating, hindi po ba, Madam Speaker, your honor?
Tama po kayo, Madam Speaker, 'yun po 'yung siyasay po natin na there are some inevitable small glitches. Pero huwag naman po sana na palakihin po ito out of proportion, na 'yung isang malit na bagay, palalabasin na ito na po 'yung kabuan ng, at there's indeed a failure in the Philippines hosting of this particular event, when in fact it's just a minor glitch.
Ayun nga po eh, 'yun ang gusto nating puntuhan. Sabi nga po ng mga Amerikano, Madam Speaker, your honor, problems happen even in the best of families. Bilang isang pamilyang Pilipino, sir, Madam Speaker, your honor, tayo namang po ay napabantog, hindi dahil sa ating karangyaan. Napabantog tayo bilang mahus-hospitableng mga tao, kahit na mahirap tayo, talagang pinagpipilitan natin at pinagtatangkaan natin na makapagdaos tayo ng aktibidad upang maisalba natin ang karangalan ng ating bansa. Nakakalungkot nga po na manggagaling pa sa mga ibang opisyalis ng ating bansa. 'Yung kaldero lang, pinag-uusapan natin. Ano po ba 'yung gusto nilang mangyari? Maglagay nalang po tayo ng isang malaking batya o isang malaking palanggana? Gumahanap tayo ng pinakatuwid na puno ng nyok, isabit nalang natin doon? Lagyan natin ang uling, at pagkatapos doon natin siga anyo at gagawin natin cauldron? 'Yun po ba 'yung gusto nilang sabihin? Hindi po ba, Madam Speaker, your honor, alam nila ang pananagutan ng isang bansa kapagka inako mo ang pagdaraus nito? Meron pong responsibilidad eh, meron pong standards, gagaya po ng mga sinabi ng naunang nagsalita. Hindi naman po pwedeng hindi tayo sumunod doon sa mga patakaran, doon sa mga requirements. Kung kina-kailangan pong maitayo natin ang isang kaldero, sangayon sa sarili nating kakayanan, at dapat naman nakayon sa standard. Gumastos nga po tayo, palagay mo na pong, palagay mo na po 100 million. Pero, Madam Speaker, your honor, wala pong kasing halaga ang karangalan ng isang bansa. Hindi po doon dapat sukatin. Naalala ko po kasi nung 1991, kundi po ako nagkakali, Madam Speaker, nagdaos na rin po tayo nito eh. Bakit ko po alam? Sapagkat meron po tayong kasama ngayon dito sa bulwagang ito na membro sila ng organizing committee nung panahon na 'yun. Ang binu- inutukoy ko po ay 'yung mag-asawa ang Congressman and Congresswoman Bem Noel, at saka 'yung asawa niyang si Jay Noel. Ganun din po ang nangyari. Napakarami pong aglahe, napakaraming intriga, pero nung nananalo na tayo ng napakaraming mga ginto, nawala na po. Pinatawag din po sila ng kongreso noon, nagpaliwanag po sila. Pero hindi naman po nasusukat sa ginto eh, maganda na po, at maganda, at, uh, siguro po, kung makakuha po tayo ng ginto na marami, kagaya nung 1991, kundi ako nagkakamali, pumangalawa po tayo noon eh.
Overall championship po tayo, Madam Speaker, noon.
Opo, pero pumangalawa tayo sapagkat nagkaroon po yata ang isang balanse na isang medalya, so, tama, okay na po 'yung pangalawa. Pero kahit na hindi tayo makakuha ng ganun karaming medalya, Madam Speaker, your honor, tatandaan lang po natin, napakaimportante rito po, ay 'yung keep pagtatagumpay po ng aktibidad na ito, sapagkat hindi po natin pwedeng ikompromiso ang karangalan ng ating bansa.
Tama po kayo doon, Madam Speaker.
Babalikan po lamang po sana, 'yung ipinakita niyo kanina rito na 7.5 billion, bumaba po sa 5.5 billion.
5 billion lang po.
5 billion na lamang po, nawawala po yata 'yung 2.5 billion, tama po ba 'yun?
Na-slash po, Madam Speaker.
At ang pagkakasa, pagkakabanggit po niyo kanina sa tanong na nauna sa akin, sino po ba 'yung may kagagawan kung bakit nabawasan po?
At kinonfirm po nung nagtanong po sa atin kanina sapagkat member po siya ng Bay Carmel Conference Committee for 2019 Budget, at siyasay po niya na si Senator Drelon.
At ang, uh, sagot po niyo, doon sa naunang nagtanong sa inyo kanina, na mukhang 'yung nawala po na 'yun, 'yung, 'yung kabuwang halaga na nawala doon sa budget na 'yun, parang lumitaw sa isang lugar. Nibinanggit po yata kay kanila, pwede pang ulitin po, sa ampuan.
Nagyan po sa, naka-flash po, nilipat po, lumabas po, lumitaw po siya sa Iloilo.
Nilipat sa Iloilo, sino po naglipat, your honor?
I have no personal knowledge, Madam Speaker. Subalit, kinonfirm po nung isang sumagot po kanina na membro po ng Bay Carmel Conference Committee na si Senator Drelon.
Meron po akong isang hawak na dokumento, Madam Speaker, your honor, ang titul po nito, Province of Iloilo Insertions Tuhan 2019 Ga. Pag sinabi po nating insertions, wala po doon sa original na gab, tama po ba 'yun?
Tama po kayo doon, Madam Speaker.
Ito po ang hawak ng dokumento na tatlong pahina, naglalamang po ng halos 82ang projects, na ang kabuan nga po ay 2.3 billion. 82ang projects. Ang sabi po ng mga Amerikano, Madam Speaker, your honor, lightning does not strike at the same place twice.
Pero, Madam Speaker, kung 84 times po.
Ito po, 82 times po eh, sa isang lugar tumama. Hindi na po yata coincidence ito, Madam Speaker, your honor. Pagkatapos, eh dito po manggagaling 'yung, nagsimula po 'yung balitaktakam sa kaldero, hindi po ba? Mister Speaker, uh, Madam Speaker, your honor. meron po ba kayong naamoy na parang isang concerted effort na parang ayaw nilang maipagtagumpay natin ang pagdaraus ng Southeast Asian Games sa ating bansa?
Madam Speaker, gaya po ng sinabi ko sa aking speech kanina, ganun po ang impresyon po ng representanteng ito. Na there's a concerted organized effort to really misinform and disinform the public as well as to paint this particular hosting as something that is a failure.
Kusakali po isang maliit na pamilya ito na nag-imbita ng mga ilang taong malalapit sa kanilang puso. Sa ilalim ng kahirapan nila, tinangka nila na imbittahin ang kanilang mga kaibigan, kahit na mahirap ang buhay. Talagang pinagtalagahan nila, pinaghandaan nila, ngunit dahil sa kahirapan, kakaroon ng konting problema. Isa sa miyembro ng pamilya pipilitin niyang imbes na tumulong ay hilaim pababa ang kanyang pamilya para hiyaing ang kanyang pamilya sa pagdaraus ng imbitasyon na yun. Anong masasabi ninyo sa ganung klasing mga tao, Madam Speaker, Your Honor?
Madam Speaker, I suppose pareho rin ng pananaw punin niyo. Sabihin natin na una, isipin po natin, tatanungin po natin ano exactly 'yung kanyang intensyon.
Huwag na po nating takaiig alabin kung ano 'yung intensyon niya, sapagkat sila lang nakakaalam kung ano 'yung intensyon nila. Pero anong opinyon ninyo sa ganung klasing mga tao na imbes na tumulong po, usakasakaling may problema man tayo? Ay lalo niyang palalakihin ang problema na yun para lamang hiyaing ang ating bansa at ilagay sa kompromiso ang karangalan pinakaiingatan nito. Anong klasing mga tao po yun, Mister, Madam Speaker, Your Honor?
Madam Speaker, kulang po 'yung lingwahe ko po ngayon para ma-describe po 'yung binabanggit po ninyo na klasing tao.
Ano po yun?
Madam Speaker, sabi ko po, mukhang kinukulang po ako ng lingwahe ngayon para or adjective para i-describe 'yung tao na sinasabi punin niyo.
Kulang na po kayo ng panghalit, 'yung ang ibig niyo sabihin. Gusto niyo bang tulungan po kayo para?
Mas maganda po siguro kung matutulungan niyo po ako, Mister Speaker.
Ano po ang tawag ninyo sa isang tao na ayaw tumulong at naninira pa? Yun madali po yun. Mabuting tao po ba yun? Ayun.
Kayo na po mismo nagsabi Madam Speaker na hindi po siya mabuting.
Wala po ako, tinatanong ko po kayo. Matinung tao po ba yun?
Yung pananaw ninyo ay suppose pareho rin po tayo doon.
Hindi ko po masyado narinig. Napakadali po ng mga tanong ko, patapos na po ako, Madam Speaker.
So mas maganda po siguro kung, kung 'yung naisip punin niyo, i-describe niya na po, Madam Speaker, and sasangayon na po tayo kung ganun din po 'yung naisip po natin.
Marami po sa atin dito, hindi nakakabasa ng isip. Gusto ko po is sabihin na ninyo kung ninasa puso ninyo. Madam Speaker, ginoong ah pinatawan, sarili lamang na mahirap i-describe ang mga taong ito sapagkat nakikita ko ang inyong discomfort. Hindi nga natin ma, ubos maisip kung bakit may mga taong ganito. Nakalagay sa alanganin ang karangalan ng bansa natin, dapat sana isama-sama tayong magbuhat ng responsibilidad. Hindi sa lahat ng pagkakataon inahanap sa atin ang pagkakaisa. Isa lamang ito na paraan maipakita natin, papano natin ibibigay ang buong kakayahan ng bansa. Kahit wala po tayong makuhang medalya, Madam Speaker, Your Honor. Kapag naidaus po natin ito, naramdaman po ng mga participants, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga ibang bansa, na pinagsikapan natin, pinagsikapan nating itaguyod ito. Katapat na rin ng maraming ginto na aanihin natin. Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Maraming salamat din po.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, next to interpolate is the Honorable Sarah Jane Elago of the Kabataan Party List.
Honorable Sarah Jane Elago of Kabataan is now recognized.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Ito po ay hindi isang interpolasyon, kundi pagpapahayag mula sa representasyon ng Kabataan, ng kanyang buong-buong suporta. Lahat po ng aming pambansang konseho at lahat ng mga katuwang na mga networks, ng mga student councils, mga campus publication, mga school and community-based organizations ay nananawagan ng buong-buong suporta sa ating mga atleta. At gayon din ang paghahangad ng tagumpay sa ating hosting ng SEA Games. Gayon din, Madam Speaker, tayo po ay sumusuporta sa panawagan ng ating kasamahan dito sa Kongreso na magkaroon din naman ng imbestigasyon ngunit sa tamang panahon. Tingnan po natin kung saan tayo nagkulang, kung ano ba, kung may nagawang pagkakamali, saan natin maitatama upang hindi na maulit-muli ang mga nakita natin na pwede pang mapaunlad. At sa mga susunod na pagkakataon na tayo ay muling magbubukas ng ating bansa sa mas marami pang ganitong kompetisyon, hindi lamang sa sports, no kundi sa marami pang iba, ay maipapakita na natin ang, ang pinakamainam na kondisyon na para sa lahat ng mga bumibisita dito sa ating bansa. Ah gayon din, Madam Speaker, ah nakita natin sa mga naging talakayan ah ng mga naunang interpreters at ng ating mga kasamahan dito sa Kongreso, kung gaano napakarami pa natin pwedeng gawin para paunlarin ang kalagayan at kapakanan ng ating mga atleta. Ah bilang a former athlete, no myself, alam ko po kung gaano ka-halaga ang apat na bagay na very basic po no para makapagperform very well 'yung ating mga athletes. Unang-una 'yung masustansyang pagkain, maayos na lugar na pahingahan at pag-eensayo. Ang pangatlo po 'yung focus sa laro. At 'yung tatlong yan ay kinakailangan nating maigaot no sa hosting ng SEA Games na ito. Hindi lamang po sa atleta ng ating bayan, kundi din sa mga atleta na kalahok sa SEA Games. At 'yung pong mga bagay na yan ay kinakailangan pa rin nating mapaunlad no para sa mga susunod na kompetisyon. Mapapaunlad din no 'yung kalagayan, 'yung welfare at 'yung pagkilala at pagtatanggol sa karapatan ng ating mga atleta bilang ah kumakatawan sa ating bansa. Kaya naman, Madam Speaker, kasama ng ating mga kapwa mababatas dito, tinatawagan natin ang lahat, marami pa pong mga laro na nangangailangan ng mas maraming spectators, maraming mga supporters. Kung maaari, manood po tayo ng mga laro, na maaari kung kayong pakipag-coordinate no, sa party list na mga Kabataan. Very active din po ang ating House Committee on Youth and Sports pagdating dito sa promotion ng mga laro na hindi po pangkaraniwan na pinapanood ng ating mga taong bayan. Kailangan-kailangan marinig ng ating mga atleta, nasa kabila po ng mga kontrobersiya, buong-buo ang ating suporta para sa kanila. Hangad natin ang kanilang tagumpay, hindi lang makapaglaro, kundi talagang magkamit ng mga panalo para sa Pilipinas. Alaban Pilipinas at muli, kasama niyo po ang representasyon na ito sa panawagan na sa pag-alulunsad ng ganitong mga aktibidades, maayos na magagamit ang pondong ng ating bayan at lahat po yan ay para sa kapakanan at sa karapatan ng atleta at ng lahat po na naghahangad ng mas tagumpay na bansa at mas ah matagumpay na paglulunsad ng mga ganitong tipo ng aktibidad. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker, maraming salamat po sa ating sponsors.
Maraming salamat din po, Madam Speaker, at kinagagalak po ng representanteng ito nasa pagkakataong ito. Kaysa po natin ang Kabataan Party List, nakikiisa po sila sa ating panawagan na ang focus po natin sa ganitong pagkakataon, sa ganitong kinaharap po natin ay ang suporta na dapat natin ibigay ng buong-buo sa mga atleta po natin at siguraduhin na 'yung pagohost po natin ng SEA Games na ito ay maging matagumpay. Salamat din sa kanyang panawagan na suportahan natin, lahat po ng mga kasamaan po nila ay manonood din para sa ganon may sigurado ang tagumpay po ng bansang Pilipinas sa pagohost po ng SEA Games.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, next to interpolate is the Honorable Raul Del Mar of the First District of Cebu City.
The Honorable Raul Del Mar of Cebu City is recognized.
Will the gentleman from the Ka'bayan Party List, the Honorable Ron Salo yield to a few questions?
Willingly, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Mister Speaker.
I was late in coming, I was not able to uh get all your uh speech, but uh that's why I asked my seatmate there, Congressman Barbers, uh what were your points? He said that there's, there are two points. Regarding first regarding disinformation or misinformation or maybe there's a group, uh organized group out to discredit our hosting, our successful hosting of the SEA Games. And the second, as he said, was about about the budget. So let me just briefly go over these two points, uh if I may, Mister Speaker.
Madam Speaker, basically po ang buod po ng ating panawagan ay magkaisa po ang bansang Pilipinas. Ito po 'yung mga, ito po 'yung kabuan po o buod po ng ating panawagan ngayon. Ang mga binanggit punin niyo, ito po 'yung mga ibang mga bagay na nagpapakita. At sinasayay po natin na mukhang wala pong sa kasalukuyan, hindi po nagkakaisa 'yung Pilipinas para siguraduhin na maging matagumpay 'yung pagohost po natin, Madam Speaker.
Mister Speaker, uyun ko sa 'yung gisulti. Ang kanantahan ni panulti niya, maayon na, apaan na usahay kaming mga bisaya, di makayong makasunod sa uh sulting ang tinagalog no, so munang uh, mukhang 'yung alangko niya, uh uh mutubag siya na ko og uh in English lang. Or kung gusto siya kumapada yun og tagalog, magbisaya lang sa ko, magtubag.
So Mister Speaker.
No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, uh let us make a light exchange, let's not be too serious no. So uh I just uh was kidding, uh Your Honor, Mister Speaker. So yes, I am one with you and with everyone else that we should do our part uh to make our hosting of the SEA Games a big success. I am with you there, so uh and I am not, I am also against disinformation and misinformation. So that is why, uh but I, I was reading the papers on my way to uh here and I distinctly read the editorial and some, and page four, SEA Games Hosting Troubles, Hunger, the thirty, DU three, three, DU thirty. So uh I am surprised, uh Mister Speaker, Your Honor, that uh how can uh uh the President and his official spokesperson, uh Secretary Panelo uh react to what is happening uh if they think that it is just merely disinformation or misinformation. Um they would not bother, I guess, answering, they would probably just dismiss it. But uh the President was uh reported to be angry about it and uh of course, the President, as I quote, "Does not like what is happening", Panelo said in an interview over Radio Filipinas on Tuesday. And then Panelo went on to say that he supported calls for an investigation uh into this hosting of the SEA Games once it is over and for sanctions to be meted out to those who will be proven to be accountable for the mess. So uh uh it's Your Honor, Mister Speaker, uh in favor of conducting an investigation on this matter so that uh if there are any uh groups uh who are trying to discredit our successful hosting that they should be held accountable uh for uh for these uh negative reports?
Certainly, Madam Speaker, but as I've mentioned in my speech also, it should be made in a proper time. Not now when the SEA Games is about to start.
Definitely, I concur with uh holding an investigation also, but after the conclusion of the SEA Games, so that we will not disturb uh the, our, our hosting of the same. So uh maybe also, Your Honor, are you in favor of uh holding anyone uh even if they are not uh groups uh out to discredit the administration and the games? By anyone, I mean to include even the government officials who may be responsible for this mess, you know? There, there would have not been any chance for uh those who are against uh this administration to discredit uh these games if uh uh they, there were, there were nothing to report at all. So if uh uh there are government officials uh accountable, then uh they should be held to answer for this, Your Honor.
Certainly, Madam Speaker, if there are really infractions committed by, including those committed by government officials, then by all means, they should be made accountable. And when pieces of evidence would warrant, then they should be made liable for that.
I'm happy to hear that, uh Mister Speaker, Your Honor. And uh will uh the Honorable Salo be uh filing a resolution? Or will he be asking uh as he ends his uh his speech that uh he will uh is calling for an investigation so that we may be able to join in?
Certainly, I'll consider filing the necessary resolution for this purpose, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, Your Honor, and I uh volunteer to be one of the uh co-authors of that uh resolution or call for a, for a, an investigation. Your Honor, uh Mister Speaker, I mentioned that according to my friend Congressman Barbers that you cited three instances of uh hmm a uh misinformation on the, on the food. Uh was this uh that they were served only um egg and kick yam? I, I'm not familiar with kick yam, I don't think uh some, uh I don't think uh, I think most of the Visaians here are not familiar with kick yam, but whatever it is uh you countered and even showed a picture, Mister Speaker, Your Honor, of kick yam which that it was not kick yam, it was a hot dog or something like that.
Madam Speaker, basically there were, I showed around seven slides or seven incidents, not just three. With respect to the first, the one that you mentioned, Madam Speaker, it is, is alleged to be kick yam when in truth and in fact, it is actually chicken, chicken sausage.
Okay, I, I uh read from the reports, Mister Speaker, Your Honor. Okay, I read from the reports, Mrs. Speaker, Your Honor, that this statement came from the ones who ate breakfast, that it was kikiam and not a hot dog. But be that as it may, let us not quibble over that.
Madam Speaker, basically, we wish to also point out that this is just one of those incidents in so many venues where our athletes are being billeted. So it's just one place. But the way it appeared in the media, it appears to have been the same food as being fed to all our athletes.
Yes, talking about food, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker, there was an issue also that there was a lack of halal food which on the Muslims partake of. And there were three countries or four countries who complained about that. And that's why our local Muslim organization, national Muslim organization, even issued a statement that they too volunteered to help out at the beginning, but they were not commissioned to do so. So that's why maybe they said, had they been, had their services been accepted, that this would not have happened, Mrs. Speaker, Your Honor.
Madam Speaker, as I've mentioned a while ago, that there may be some minor glitches and perhaps some of those concerns may be legitimate. But the entire, the point that we're trying to drive out is to, for us, to really unite. And of course, we've heard all those concerns and we know that the organizers are trying to address these concerns.
Okay, so let's go to some instances, Mrs. Speaker, Your Honor, of how these complaints came into the fore. First, it was just in trickles, but so many complaints followed after opening the floodgates. And so it was quoted in the papers that Juliana Seong, Chief of Mission of Team Singapore, sent to the organizer a third letter urgently calling for an urgent and immediate attention to address the dire situation that the team was facing and that she was left with the athletes badly affected and not be able to prepare the games effectively. And this is where it was mentioned also that there was no sufficient halal food. Secondly, I might as well just give instances as reported. This does not come from me or someone telling me directly, Your Honor. But there is merit and credibility to the editorial where this of the Daily Inquirer today. So I am just quoting some. But before Your Honor will answer, let me go to the second instance. Let Dimson, coach of the Philippine Women's Football Team, our very own team, set the internet on fire when she disclosed that the teams had rice, egg, and kikiam. She's the one who said this for breakfast. And a woefully insufficient source of calories and nutrition needed for the grilling football matches. Then another one, as Malaysia and Myanmar, no. This is a, insofar as facilities is concerned, as Malaysia and Myanmar played the first football match, the game went on without electronic scorecard in the venue, which was the Rizal Memorial Stadium. That was clearly unfinished with metal scaffolding still in place, dugouts not fully fitted out, electrical works ongoing, and some air conditioning units yet to be installed. And just one more, one more report, Your Honor, on the shortcomings. The Fisco, the Organizing Committee, did apologize. So if there was misinformation or disinformation, that why would the Organizing Committee apologize for the early snafus and vowed to do better? I'm glad to read that they vowed to do better, Your Honor, because even if these complaints have merits, then perhaps our organizers will be more determined to do their best to sort of make up, make up for the bad incidents that happened so that we can still save the reputation of the Philippines as being always a good host to SEA Games and other international events. Is that, do you think so, Your Honor?
Madam Speaker, as I've mentioned in my privileged speech, we're not saying that none of these concerns is legitimate. Perhaps some of them, maybe, or a few of them. What we're saying here is for us to exercise extreme caution, restraint, and discernment lest we miss the inter-objective and rare opportunity hosting the SEA Games. Or else we will also miss the real and bigger prize that of bringing glory, honor, and our country and our people. It is not about extolling all of these seeming shortcomings that we would observe. Because we were going to read also the news after Malaysia, when they hosted it in 2015. There are so many, there's a long list also. But what we're saying is, is it now, is it now the time for us to discuss all of these things when the SEA Games is already about to start? When, as I've mentioned a while ago as well, there would be a proper time and forum for when we're going to discuss all of this?
Well, there are other interpolators, Your Honor, lined up. So let me just close with two very short observations because of the second point about the budget, where it was stated, and I showed that, Your Honor, that 2.5 was taken out of the 6.5 original budget.
7.5, Madam Speaker. Originally, 7.5, then it became 5.
7.5. 5. And then 2.5 was taken out and brought to Iloilo. How is this, how was this done, Your Honor? In the budget, you can just take out funds from one item and transfer it to another item? Or you take out funds there and then, you do not transfer it, but just leave it? So it's up to government now and the budget makers to provide the 2.5 anywhere? And maybe you cannot really be sure that it was taken out and given to Iloilo? So how will Your Honor be certain that this was done? Because I'm not too familiar with the system. I know that your budget is slashed, but it's seldom slashed and that amount slashed directly transferred to another project, Your Honor.
Madam Speaker, I have no personal knowledge on this particular matter. It was just based on research. But at the same time, one of the interpolators a while ago confirmed as he was a member of the Bi-Cameran Conference Committee representing the House of Representatives.
And lastly, Your Honor, the Organizing Committee, Fisco, is a private foundation. Is that not so, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Private foundation, but there are some members who are government officials. Is that true, Your Honors?
Madam Speaker, this particular question was already raised by the first interpreter and also already explained that Fisco has a so-called private foundation as much as it was incorporated under the Securities and Exchange Commission in order for it to have judicial personality, but membership of which is 80% are government employees or officials of the government.
Well, will this, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker, clarify this report, which I will quote also from the editorial, that Fisco, the Organizing Committee, cornered a big chunk of the budget with 1 billion going to them as financial assistance, which amount does not, is exempt from the required bidding and they can spend it as they please, as they decide, as a body, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker. Is this true that 1.5 was slashed from the budget and given to the Organizing Committee for whatever expenses they decide to put it in?
Madam Speaker, I have no personal knowledge of that particular information that they're raising, but nonetheless, we note that Fisco, given that particular, the membership of which are coming from POC and PSC, and at the same time, the amount given to it actually was given to, based on my research, was given to DBM in order for it to be the one to implement all these particular matters that were mentioned.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker, for the replies. And again, I congratulate you for bringing up this matter of grave concern to the country. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you for supporting our call for nation and to our people.
Majority Leader. Majority Leader. Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Manuel Zubiri of the Third District of Bokitnun for his manifestation.
Honorable Zubiri is now recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, mine is not an interpolation, but more of a manifestation. But I just want to correct. My brother, Meg Zubiri, was supposed to be the chairman, but because of his duties in the Senate, he decided not to chair the SEA Games, Madam Speaker. But he is now the head of the Arnis contingent of our country and he is hosting the Arnis contingents of the other countries, Madam Speaker, which I think so far, okay po sila dun sa mga contingent na mga Arnisador, Madam Speaker. May I be allowed to manifest, Madam Speaker? After listening to everyone and to all my dear colleagues, I think these discussions and arguments right now is counterproductive. This is counterproductive to our country and our athletes. Just a little while ago, Madam Speaker, I spoke to my good friend, ex or dati nating kongresista, si Monsur de Losario. Sabi niya, Manuel, kung pwede, sabihin natin sa ating mga colleagues, tama muna ceasefire, kasi this is counterproductive to our athletes, Madam Speaker. I am not saying not to look into this concern or concerns. This can be done after the SEA Games. But at least, Madam Speaker, right now, let us correct what needs to be corrected immediately, move on, and let's try to bring home the medals or keep the medals here in our country. Because we need to get these medals and we do not want to discourage our athletes right now because these are all discouraging news and it's not helping them any. Let us continue the camaraderie that we have built with our Southeast Asian neighbors. Let us enjoy the games. Huwag muna nating gatungan, kasi lalaki at lalaki lang po 'yung problema. Do I think this is encouraging to our athletes right now? Definitely not. I've spoken to some of them and they said, "Please, stop. Let us win the medals. Then if you want, continue on after the SEA Games." In the end, let us unite. Let us make sure that our country and its people will be proud of our athletes and their performance. Then let us do our jobs later on to police or to correct the concerns or to correct what needs to be corrected. Let us do this now for the sake of our beloved country. Let us keep the peace. Let us put a ceasefire on this for at least two weeks until it's done so our athletes can continue what they need to do and that is to win for our beloved country. Let us give them the chance and then we can move on later on to what needs to be done. This is all, Madam Speaker. Marami pong salamat.
Thank you very much.
And to our dear colleague, Ron Salo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Florencio Bem Noel of the Anuray Party List for his manifestation.
Honorable Bem Noel is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Since nabanggit po ako ni DS Marcoleta kanina, no? Yes, I'm a very proud member of the Organizing Committee of the 1991 SEA Games. In fact, napakaswerte ko dun ko po nakilala ang aking future, no? Si Congresswoman Jay. At that time, we were also criticized. Grabe po ang bati ko sa amin, pero not as bad as today. Na ang social media, eh, grabeng grabe. Dati po, tabloid, broadsheet, TV. In fact, pinatawag po kami dito sa kongreso. Ang budget po namin nun was only for repairs, 300 million, no? Wala po kaming ginawang structures, wala pong ganon. Pero 300 million na yon, 1991. Dami pa po akong buhok nun, no? Ngayon ho, 5 billion. Marami pong ginawang infrastruktura na pwede nating magamit in the future. Ang hindi po alam ng marami, ang Rizal Memorial Coliseum na tinatanong na, bakit hindi dun ginagawa ang SEA Games? 85 years old, apat na beses na po nagkaroon ng major renovation and that is owned by the city of Manila. Anytime po pagginatok, ang mayor pwedeng ibenta yon. San tayo pupunta? Remember the Games, umiikot po yon sa mga member nations ng SEA Games, no? So every 14 or 10 years, nagho-host po So every fourteen or ten years, nagohost po tayo. San tayo pupunta? Saan ang bahay natin? Yung po namang issue dun sa paggain, dati pa po nag-oorganize kami ng mga sporting events. Parati pong reklamo yun, whether it's here or dun po sa ibang bansa. Pero issue lang na konti. Ang nakakalungkot ho, ngayon, batikos. Hindi nagkakaisa. Dati po ganun din, pero nung nananalo na po 'yung athletes natin nung 1991, that was the best showing so far ng Philippine delegation. Ninety-one medals along with Indonesia. Sad to say, pangalawa lang tayo sa overall because of one silver medal, no? Ngayon, nagkaaisa at tumulong lahat. In fact, after that, ang Congress na mismo ang nagsabi sa susunod na budget, kung ano ang deficit, ano ang kulang ninyo nung 1991 C-Games, kami ang magpupuno. Huwag po natin hayaan mangyari ulit yun. Unahang po natin as members of Congress. Ngayon, hindi na po ako 'yung pinapatawag. Tayo po ang magtatawag at tutulong. Nagkaaisa, pagkatapos manalo, paano po kung talo? Yung po 'yung point ko, sana ho, hindi umabot sa ganon. Sana magkaaisa at tulungan po natin ang dapat tulungan ang atletang Pilipino. Sana po, andito po mga atleta din po sa Eastern Visayas, no? Sana maging ehemplon nila 'yung 1991 C-Games na in spite of the fact na nagkakagulo, ang ginawa ho nila, panahon po yun nila Monsur. Panahon nila Lydia de Vega at that time, no? So sana ho, ganung spirit ang maramdaman ng ating mga atleta para po makuha na po natin ang matagal na po natin pinapanaginip na maging number one sa Southeast Asia. Thank you po, maupay akuluk.
Maraming salamat din po sa inyo, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we recognize the final interpreter or gentleman who will manifest, may we recognize the guests of the Kingog Party List, Honorable Yada Marie Romualdes and the First District Representative, Majority Leader Ferdinand Martin Romualdes from the East Visayas Collegiate Athletic Association, from the Eastern Visayas State University Basketball Team Champions, Julius Ross Lacaba, Dominador Aguirre and their team and their company.
The guest of Majority Leader Ferdinand Romualdes and Yada Marie Romualdes, please stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
For his manifestation, may we recognize the Honorable Minority Leader Benny Abante.
Minority Leader Benny Abante is now recognized.
Sorry, Your Honor. Our Minority Leader Benny Abante.
Minority Leader Benny Abante is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I really do not want to stand anymore on this issue, but because my counterpart in the Senate, the minority leader, is started, so I think I should also stand and make my manifestation. Perhaps I would be also asking some questions if a gentleman from Cabayan would allow.
Readingly, Madam Speaker.
I was reading the papers today and they quoted the statement of the Senate Minority Leader Franklin Delone, and I would like to read. I hope that my friend, Minority Leader, would be even listening now, or he will know. He says, "Ayoko na sanang magsalita dahilan gusto ko na magkaaisa tayo para sa mga atleta." Pero itong House of Representatives ay daldal ng daldal, kaya wala tayong magawa kung hindi sumagot." End of quote. Una kung tanong dito, meron po ba sa atin dito ang daldal ng daldal? Ngayon lam po pinag-usapan to eh. Am I right, Madam Speaker, Your Honor?
Madam Speaker, that's what I personally know of as well. This is the first time that someone stood in this podium on this particular issue.
I do not know what the minority leader of the Senate is referring to, you know? Among the more than 304 congressmen and congresswomen that he says daldal po ng daldal. Do you know who are the congressmen he's referring to? Madam Speaker, Your Honor?
Madam Speaker, I have no knowledge of that particular statement, neither any inkling who the minority leader of the Senate is referring to.
So, sa pagkakaalam ninyo, Your Honor, sino ba ang unang dumaldal?
Based on the news, the reports, I suppose it's the same person that you're referring to.
Hindi ba 'yung minority leader ng Senado ang unang-unang tumayo upang questionin ang magkakagawa ng malaking caldero? Madam Speaker, Your Honor?
Madam Speaker, so far, ganun po 'yung recollection ko based nun sa mga nabasa ko sa news.
What we would like to establish here, Your Honor, is this, that it is not the House of Representatives that actually you know, spilled the beans, so to speak, at dumaldal tungkol sa mga bagay na ito, because we have been quiet all along until until Your Honor, Ron Salo, delivered a privileged speech today. We have been quiet all along. In fact, I was even being asked to speak. I was even being asked to speak and I keep my mouth shut and remain quiet. And here comes the distinguished minority leader of the Senate saying, "Uulitin ko, sabi niya, ayoko na sanang magsalita dahilan sa gusto ko na magkaaisa tayo para sa mga atleta. Pero itong House of Representatives ay daldal ng daldal." I do not know if, Madam Speaker, when when the minority leader of the Senate said this, is he dreaming or is he well awake when he was saying this?
Madam Speaker, cannot surmise.
Well, have you read the article of a certain commentator in the Philippine Star entitled "Caldero Walang Kanin"?
Madam Speaker, I apologize, I didn't have that luxury of reading the newspaper nor the editorials today.
You know, what we do not need in a time like this where we are actually applauding and supporting our athletes, are biting tongues, Madam Speaker. Palagay niyo kaya, itong mga tinatawag nating isnafus na ito na mga batikos na ito, kumbaga po sa boxing eh below the belt na yan.
Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, that's the impression of this representation.
Eh kung baga po sa digmaan, nakikipagdigma tayo. Yung ating mga sundalo haba nakikipagdigma. Eh, kung ano nung sinasabi sa mga sundalo, you know? Anyway, Madam Speaker, Your Honor, the only manifestation I have is this now. If there is really enough evidence of whatever it is to investigate the infrastructure, the organizing committee, well, let's just do it after the C-Games. You know, dun tayo mag-imbestiga, pagkatapos ng C-Games, saka natin to gawin. But, Madam Speaker, Your Honor, what is happening now with all of these nafus, so to speak, are not actually helping our athletes. Am I right?
Certainly, Madam Speaker. This is one of the points that you've raised.
Well, may I say that I would like to tell our athletes to go? To go, ibig sabihin ng to go, abante. Abante lang ang mga athletes natin. Sapagat nalalaman ko na malaki ang magagawa nila sa ating bayan, huwag silang ano bang umatras, o abante lamang sila, saka nalang ginagawa. And let us support them to be able to do an excellent job, because they are not only representing themselves, they are representing the whole country and every Filipino. I am asking and requesting those people who have some axe to grind, whether it be, you know, whether it be political or what have you, to stop doing it now. Let us stop all the criticism, let's stop all the talks and let us rally behind the C-Games and our athletes for us to be able, as Congressman Zubiri has said, so that we will be able to bring home the bacon. May I remind our friends in government? May I remind even the media? May I remind even those that do not support these games? May I remind them on what the Lord Jesus said? He said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." We do not want to be divided in this event. We want to be united in this event. We would like our athletes to realize that we in the House of Representatives are fully supporting them. We will support them. Let's rally behind them. And this coming Saturday, ipakita po natin sa buong mundo na tayo mga Pilipino, kahit ano mong mga problema ang nangyari. We can overcome every problem, because that is what the Filipinos are. Madam Speaker, Your Honor, maraming-maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat din po, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other members who wish to interpolate our good sponsor, I move that we terminate the question of privilege. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is non. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, may I respectfully express my appreciation for giving me the opportunity to speak on this matter? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Ron Salo together with the interpolations and the manifestations to the Committee on Public Accounts, Good Government and Public Accountability and Public Information. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair here is non. The privileged speech of Honorable Ron Salo is referred now to the Committee on Rules and Good Government and Public Accounts. Majority and Public Info. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we greet the guests of the Honorable Pasaradasa of the Lone District of Laku-Laku City? They are from Officers of the United Drivers Operators Transport Cooperative led by Mr. Malvin S. Arias, the Chairman, Gilbert Detros, the Vice Chairman, Richard Rodriguez, his Board Director, Roberto Aguilar, Board Director, Heidi Fontes, the Co-op Manager, Charlie Bagio, the Paralegal, and Mr. Ronilo Ibanez, the Co-op Sakatari.
The guest of Honorable Pasaradasa of the Officers of the United Drivers Operators Transport Cooperative led by Malvin Arias, the Chairman, please stand up. Welcome, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guest of the Honorable Lolita Javier of the Second District of Leyte. They are together with the Honorable Florencio Noel of the Anuarai Party List. They are the guests from the municipality of Mayorga, Leyte. Ms. Jennifer Abril, Ms. Stephanie Manito, Ms. Julieta Cribilio, Ms. Arlette Mukia and Ms. Melissa Camba. So move, Madam Speaker.
The guest of Honorable Florencio Noel of Anuarai Party List. Please stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we elect and appoint the conferees on the Disagreement Provisions of House Bill Number 4228 or the Fiscal Year 2020 General Appropriations Bill for the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee. They are as Chairperson, headed by Chairperson Isidro Ungab of the Committee on Appropriations, Majority Leader Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, Deputy Speaker for Finance Luis Enrique LeFerte, Vice Chairperson Joyce Sartes Alceda, Senior Deputy Majority Leader Jesus Cristian Ramulia, Deputy Speaker Napali Gonzalez II, Deputy Speaker Aurelio Gonzalez, Senior Vice Chairperson Lolita Elin Ermita Buahin, Vice Chairperson Michael John J. Dovit, Vice Chairperson Juny Kua, Vice Chairperson Joseline Kim Kaitong, Vice Chairperson Alfred Vargas, Vice Chairperson Jose Antonio Kuya, Si Alvarado, Vice Chairperson Giudoro Jaresco, Deputy Majority Leader Amanda Christine Cristal Bagatzing, Deputy Majority Leader Juan Pablo R. P. Bondock, Deputy Majority Leader Bernarda Herrera, Representative Davida Apol Pancho, the Honorable Lucy Marie Gomez, Torres Gomez, Deputy Minority Leader Benito Abante, Senior Deputy Minority Leader Janet Garin, Honorable Vice Chair Romeo Momo, and for the independent, Honorable Edsel Lagman. So move, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is non. All those who are mentioned to the committee is now approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to elect the following members to the respective committees. To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, Congressman Yasser Balindong. For the Committee on Midnight Affairs, the Honorable Yasser Balindong. For as Vice Chairperson on Committee on Basic Education and Culture, the Honorable Yasser Balindong. To the Committee on Public Works and Highways, the Honorable Yasser Balindong as member. To the Committee on Public Accounts as members, the Honorable Ace Barberz, the Honorable Onyx Chisologo, the Honorable Adriano Ebcas and the Honorable Alan T. To the Committee on Governmentary Organization as Vice Chairperson, the Honorable Alan T. To the Committee on Ways and Means as member, the Honorable Alan T. To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries as member, the Honorable Alan T. To the Committee on Natural Resources as member, the Honorable Adriano Ebcas. To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs as member, the Honorable Jun Babasa. To the Committee on Energy as member, the Honorable Alan T. To the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability as member, the Honorable Alan T. the Honorable Presley de Jesus and the Honorable Adriano Ebcas. To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms as member, the Honorable Alan T. And lastly, to the Committee on Ways and Means as member, the Honorable Alan T. and the Honorable Chodarico Jaresco. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 5491 under Committee Report Number 78 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 5491.
House Bill Number 5491, an act renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to Cruise Telephone Company Incorporated under Republic Act Number 7961 entitled "An Act Granting to Cruise Telephone Company Incorporated, A Franchise to Install, Operate, and Maintain a Telecommunication System Throughout the Philippines."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to sponsor this act measure, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chicoy Alvarez, the Chairman of the Leadership Franchise. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Chicoy Alvarez is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that the explanatory note be entered as the sponsorship speech.
We join Mr. Speaker move that the explanatory note be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpolate on this act measure, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wishes to introduce amendments and no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 5491 under Committee Report Number 78. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved. All those who are in favor of House Bill 5491 say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 5491 is hereby approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 197 under Committee Report Number 79 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 197.
House Resolution 197, a resolution proclaiming the month of September as Philippine Bamboo Month.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 197 under Committee Report Number 79. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move in the name of this motion to approve, to consider House Bills, local House Bills Number 5506 under Committee Report Number 80, House Bill 1477 under Committee Report Number 83, House Bill Number 5568 under Committee Report Number 85. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpolate on the measures, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate on the respective House.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wishes to introduce amendments and no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bills Number 5506, 1477, and 5568. So move, Mr. Speaker.
So those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. The House Bill, the omnibus, House Bill 5506, 1477, 5568 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing the inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. First, Number One, House Resolution Number Four to the Committee on Natural Resources, House Resolution Number Five to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution Number Six to the Committee on Agriculture and Food, House Resolution Number Seven to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution Number Eight to the Committee on Foreign Affairs, House Resolution Number Nine to the Committee on Energy, House Resolution Number Ten to the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, House Resolution Number Eleven to the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms, House Resolution Number Twelve to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, House Resolution Number Thirteen to the Committee on Agrarian Reform, House Resolution Number Fifteen to the Committee on Public Works and Highways, House Resolution Number Sixteen to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, House Resolution Number Eighteen to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, House Resolution Number Nineteen to the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, House Resolution Number Twenty to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution Number Twenty-One to the Committee on Agriculture and Food, House Resolution Number Twenty-Three to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Health, House Resolution Number Twenty-Four to the Committee on Justice, House Resolution Number Twenty-Five to the Committee on Local Government, House Resolution Number Twenty-Six to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Health, House Resolution Number Thirty to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, House Resolution Number Thirty-One to the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, House Resolution Number Thirty-Two to the Committee on Public Works and Highways, House Resolution Number Forty-One to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, House Resolution Number Forty-Two to the Committee on Justice, House Resolution Number Forty-Three to the Committee on Transportation, House Resolution Number Forty-Four to the Committee on Energy, House Resolution Number Forty-Five to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution Number Forty-Six to the Committee on Health, House Resolution Number Forty-Seven to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution Number Forty-Eight to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution Number Forty-Nine to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution Number Fifty to the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation, House Resolution Number Fifty-One to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, House Resolution Number Fifty-Three to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, House Resolution Number Fifty-Four to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, House Resolution Number Fifty-Five to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Resolution Number Fifty-Six to the Committee on Trade Industry and Economic Affairs, House Resolution Number Fifty-Seven to the Committee on Good Government, Public Accountability, and Energy, House Resolution Number Fifty-Eight to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, Fifty-Nine to the Committee on Poverty Elevation, Sixty to the Committee on Energy, Sixty-Two to the Committee on Appropriation, Sixty-Three to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability, Sixty-Four to the Committee on Trade and Industry and Health, Sixty-Five to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, Sixty-Seven to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, Sixty-Eight to the Committee on Health, Sixty-Nine to the Committee on Local Government, Seventy to the Committee on Local Government, Seventy-Two to the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, Seventy-Eight to the Committee on Public Works and Highways, Seventy-Nine to the Committee on Ways and Means, Eighty to the Committee on Senior Citizens, Eighty-One to the Committee on Energy, Eighty-Six to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, Ninety-One to the Committee on National Defense and Security, Ninety-Two to the Committee on National Defense and Security, Ninety-Three to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, Ninety-Four to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, Ninety-Five to the Committee on National Defense and Security, Ninety-Six to the Committee on National Defense and Security, Ninety-Seven to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, One-O-One to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, One-O-Six to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, One-O-Eight to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, One-O-Nine to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, One-Eleven to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, One-Twelve to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, One-Thirteen to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, One-Twenty to the Committee on Transportation, One-Twenty-One to the Committee on Energy, One-Twenty-Three to the Committee on Transportation, One-Twenty-Four to the Committee on Health, One-Twenty-Five to the Committee on Natural Resources, One-Twenty-Six to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Health, One-Twenty-Seven to the Committee on Tourism, One-Two-Eight to the Committee on Public Order and Safety, One-Thirty to the Committee on Welfare of Children, One-Thirty-One to the Committee on Health, One-Thirty-Two to the Committee on Public Works and Highways, One-Thirty-Three, Committee on Transportation, One-Thirty-Four to the Committee on Health, One-Thirty-Five to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Games and Amusement, One-Thirty-Six to the Committee on Foreign Affairs, One-Forty-One to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Games and Amusement, One-Forty-Two to the Committee on Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security, One-Forty-Three to the Committee on Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security, One-Forty-Four to the Committee on Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security, One-Forty-Five to the Committee on Health, One-Forty-Six to the Committee on Health, One-Forty-Eight, Public Order and Safety, One-Forty-Nine, Transportation, One-Fifty-Three, Good Government, Public Accountability, and Games and Amusement, One-Fifty-Four, Public Order and Safety, One-Fifty-Six, Banks and Financial Intermediaries, One-Fifty-Seven, Trade Industry and Local Government, One-Fifty-Eight, Health, One-Fifty-Nine, Labor Employment and Health, One-Sixty, Energy, One-Sixty-One, Energy, One-Sixty-Five, Metro Development, Metro Manila Development, One-Sixty-Seven, Local Government, One-Seventy, Trade and Industry, One-Seventy-One, Health, One-Seventy-Two, Transportation, One-Seventy-Three, Transportation, One-Seventy-Four, Public Information, One-Seventy-Five, Housing and Urban Development, One-Seventy-Eight, Agrarian Reform, One-Seventy-Nine, Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education, One-Eighty-One, Public Works and Highways, One-Eighty-Two, Higher and Technical Education, One-Eighty-Three, Health, One-Eighty-Four, Health, One-Eighty-Five, Public Order and Safety, One-Eighty-Six, Public Accountability and Health, ah, no, sorry. Good Government, Committees on Good Government, Public Accountability, and Health. One-Eighty-Nine, Good Government, Public Accountability, and Games and Amusement. One-Ninety, Natural Resources, One-Ninety-Two, Agriculture and Food, One-Eighty-Three, Agriculture and Food, One-Eighty-Five, Labor Employment, One-Eighty-Six, Dangerous Drugs, One-Eighty-Eight, Trade and Industry, One-Eighty-Nine, Health, Two-O-One, Public Order and Safety, Two-O-Two, Transportation, Two-O-Three, Health, Two-O-Four, Metro Manila Development, Two-O-Five, Public Order and Safety, Two-O-Six, Local Government, Two-O-Seven, Public Order and Safety, Two-Ten, Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Two-Forteen, Poverty Elevation, Two-Sixteen, Public Order and Safety, Two-Seventeen, Energy, Two-Eighteen, Health, Two-Nineteen, Basic Education and Culture, Two-Twenty, Health, Two-Twenty-One, Games and Amusement, Two-Two-Four, Agriculture and Food, Two-Two-Five, Agriculture and Food, Two-Two-Six, Agrarian Reform, Two-Two-Seven, Ways and Means, Two-Two-Eight, Energy, Two-Two-Nine, Health, Two-Three-Zero, Human Rights, Two-Three-Two, Women and Gender Equality, Two-Three-Three, Women and Gender Equality, Two-Three-Four, Basic Education and Culture, Two-Three-Five, Agriculture and Food, Two-Three-Six, Energy, Two-Three-Seven, Transportation, Two-Three-Eight, Good Government and Public Accountability and Health, Two-Thirty-Nine, Public Works and Highways, Two-Forty, Agriculture and Food, Two-Forty-One, Basic Education and Culture, Two-Forty-Two, Transportation, Two-Forty-Three, Public Order and Safety, Two-Forty-Four, Women and Gender Equality, Two-Forty-Six, Good Government and Public Accountability and Health, Two-Forty-Seven, Natural Resources, Two-Forty-Eight, Natural Resources, Two-Forty-Nine, Agriculture and Food, Two-Five-Zero, Two-Fifty, Foreign Affairs, Two-Five-Two, Transportation, Two-Five-Three, Health, Two-Five-Four, Economic Affairs and Trade and Industry, Two-Five-Six, Disaster Management, Two-Five-Seven, Basic Education and Culture, Two-Five-Nine, Basic Education and Culture, Two-Six-Zero, Justice, Two-Six-Two, Suffrage and Electoral Reforms, Two-Six-Three, Agriculture and Food, Two-Six-Seven, Natural Resources, Two-Six-Nine, Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Two-Seven-Zero, Women and Gender Equality, Two-Seven-One, Basic Education and Culture, Two-Seven-Two, Tourism, Two-Seven-Four, Public Order and Safety, Two-Seven-Five, Information and Communications Technology, Two-Seven-Seven, Basic Education, Culture, and Higher and Technical Education, Two-Seven-Eight, Health, Two-Eighty, Justice, Two-Eighty-Three, Agriculture and Food, Two-Eighty-Five, Justice, Two-Eighty-Six, Transportation, Two-Eighty-Seven, National Defense and Security, Two-Eighty-Eight, Public Order and Safety, Two-Ninety, Agriculture and Food, Two-Ninety-Two, Labor Employment and Games and Amusement, Two-Ninety-Four, Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Two-Ninety-Five, Housing and Urban Development, Three-Zero-Two, Natural Resources, Three-O-Four, Transportation, Three-O-Five, Transportation, Three-O-Seven, Energy, Three-O-Nine, Public Works and Highways, Three-Twenty, Agriculture and Food, Three-Twenty-One, Energy, Three-Hundred-Twenty-Three, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety, Three-Hundred-Twenty-Six, Agriculture and Food, Three-Two-Nine, National Defense and Security, Three-Three-Zero, Public Order and Safety, Three-Three-Two, Agriculture and Food, Three-Three-Five, Basic Education and Culture, Three-Three-Six, Agriculture and Food, Three-Three-Seven, Labor Employment and Games and Amusement, Three-Three-Eight, Tourism, Three-Forty-Two, Welfare of Children, Three-Forty-Four, Metro Manila Development, Three-Five-One, Housing and Urban Development, Three-Five-Four, National Defense and Security, Sorry, Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security, Three-Five-Five, Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security, Three-Six-Zero, Ways and Means, Three-Six-One, Public Works and Highways, Three-Six-Two, Health, Three-Six-Three, Public Accounts, Increase. Three-Six-Six, National Defense and Security, Three-Six-Eight, National Defense and Security, Three-Seven-Zero, National Defense and Security, Three-Seven-One, Natural Resources, Three-Seven-Three, National Defense and Security, Three-Seven-Four, Welfare of Children, Three-Seven-Seven, Disaster Management, Three-Seven-Nine, Trade and Industry and Midnight Affairs, Three-Eight-Zero, Housing and Urban Development, Three-Eight-One, Trade and Industry, Three-Eight-Three, Agriculture and Food, Three-Eight-Four, Justice, Three-Eight-Five, Youth and Sports Development, Four-Six-Nine, Public Accounts, Three-Eight-Eight, Youth and Sports Development, Three-Eight-Nine, Trade and Industry, Three-Nine-Zero, Energy, Three-Nine-Seven, Youth and Sports Development, Four-Hundred, Four-Zero-Zero, Justice, Four-O-Three, Local Government, Muslim Affairs and Peace, Peace, Consolidation, and Unity, Four-O-Seven, Transportation, Four-One-Three, Disaster Management, Four-One-Four, Energy, Four-One-Five, Ecology, Four-One-Six, Dangerous Drugs, Four-One-Seven, Disaster Management, Four-Two-Zero, Overseas Workers Affairs, Four-Three-Zero, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety, Four Three One, Social Services. Four Four Zero, Public Order and Safety. Four Four One, Energy. Four Four Four, Transportation. Four Four Six, Public Order and Safety. Four Five Four, Social Services. Four Five Nine, Justice. Four Six Eight, National Defense and Security. Four Seven Zero, Disaster Management. Four Seven Three, Basic Education and Culture. Four Seven Six, Basic Education and Culture. Four Eight One, Trade and Industry. Four Eight Six, Justice. Four Eight Eight, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety. And lastly, Mr. Speaker, Four Eight Nine to the Committee on Transportation. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bills Number 1158, 1477, 4119, 5506, 5509, and 5567, um, sorry, 5568, and House Resolution Number 197 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session until December 2 at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended until December 2 at 3 o'clock, 2090. Is there any objection? The Chair is non. The motion is approved.